All right, it's a side door by the police station. Uh, I don't know. Maybe, uh, uh, some, somebody will go down the porch here. I'll put you in.
So is that the one person?
Side door, yeah, side door.
Yep.
Another five police stations.
All TCs search their room.
All right. Okay. Right. I'm not being unsatisfied. I'm not being unsatisfied because it looks like you're not sweating.
Oh, I'm sweating. Yeah, hey, exactly, it's far away.
Control your breathing.
Right.
Slow and steady.
Huh?
It won't fit into the thing?
There's no cords to run to the plugs.
Hello?
Are you all set, Jim?
Pretty good.
Okay. All right. Good evening. Um, being six o'clock, we'll start the meeting. Uh, we'll start with the salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Here.
Ms. Dougherty?
Here.
Mr. Hoey?
Here.
Mayor Leahy?
Here.
Ms. Martin?
Here.
Ms. Clark?
Here.
Mr. Dakota?
Here.
Seven present.
So before we get started, I did check with the Health Department. The tables are all spread out. Um, if you want to wear your mask, you can. Uh, if you feel comfortable being separated enough, we can leave the masks off. Um, we got the windows going open. Uh, the AC isn't working the best, but it should be on. The fans have no plugs, I apologize. I don't know why the, uh, extension cords weren't run to the, to the fans yet. Um, we'll see how it goes. If we want to maybe set like a three-hour limit for being in here, we'll see how it goes. Well, just with everything going on, we're hot and cooped up and we want to adjourn and do another night, we'll see how it goes, so. Um, unless you think that's not long enough, so. You think it's too long, too short? Okay. All right. So, everybody feel good? All right. So now we'll get into special order business. Um, the FY21 budget public hearing. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, committee members. It, uh, while it's hot in here, uh, and while we are spaced apart six feet, it is still extremely nice to finally be back in person and returning to some sense of limited normalcy. So thank you, committee members, for pushing that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for organizing that. Tonight is an important conversation.
You are now unmuted.
All right, you're unmuted, you can continue, Mr. Superintendent.
Although we are here in person, we are still under the guise of Zoom. Uh, all right. So tonight's presentation is structured around the guidance provided by the committee last week. Expanding on our scenario-based planning process, which began in April, we have updated the committee's budget book to include a scenario level funding. Ms. Turner will walk the committee through the updates, which contemplate further reductions of $6.7 million in operating expenses, as well as the need to absorb additional costs due to COVID-19, while accounting for the anticipated revenue from the Federal Cares Act grant. But it's important to point out that much of this is still highly speculative. Despite it being June 8th, there still isn't enough information available for me to make an informed recommendation to the committee on the district's annual budget. The exercise of building out a level funding scenario was a valuable exercise, and I believe it would be prudent for us as a district to continue to build out additional budget scenarios, which contemplate even less state aid. However, there is limited, if any, practical benefit for the committee to adopt a budget that at this point relies on significant guesswork on both the revenue and expense sides. In some ways, adopting a speculative, level-funded budget for even one month could be detrimental to the district's summer work. Thus, I am recommending tonight that the committee proceed with a 1/12 budget for July 2020, which continues the FY20 line item budget for an additional month at $14,948,595. This recommendation became clear after going through this exercise, and I am looking forward to the committee's questions, guidance, and advice, as we continue to work through this unprecedented budget process together. Before I hand the microphone to Ms. Turner to walk the committee through this latest budget scenario, I want to highlight a few important points, which will likely continue to be pertinent to each future scenario for budget cuts that we develop. One, all the contracts the district currently has with its bargaining units will expire on June 30th. Those conversations and negotiations remain active, and this line item budget does not account for any perceived or forecasted outcomes to those negotiations. However, you will notice there is a placeholder of $600,000 in savings that would need to result from these negotiations for this budget scenario to fully balance. As a reminder, the district is facing increased costs of approximately $5.4 million in the next fiscal year due to contractually mandated salary increases. Our unions have been great partners throughout this process, but it's important to emphasize that they have not agreed to any of these savings. Instead, they have been transparent in requesting that we await concrete revenue figures from the state, and I'm looking forward to our continued collaborative work as the revenue picture becomes clearer. Two, there's a placeholder of $600,000 within the budget scenario to account for COVID-related expense variables, including equipment and supplies that may be required of the district in order to meet whatever parameters for reopening that the state finalizes. This estimate may seem high on the surface, but it is far more likely that it is actually lower than what we may ultimately need. On Friday, we were just informed by DESI that face masks and other personal protective equipment will be required by anyone in a school building next year, and that cost must be accounted for by each district. At this point in time, DESI is recommending that we plan for one mask per student each week and one face mask per staff member per day. Additional equipment, such as gowns and gloves, will also be needed for some staff members who interact with more vulnerable student populations. We haven't received any information on whether the state has negotiated lower prices for purchasing this equipment, and our cursory estimate has a spending upwards of $200,000 on face masks alone. The American Association of School Administrators and the Association of School Business Officials estimate, based on an analysis of CDC guidelines, that school districts may face up to $490 per student in increased costs. For Lowell, that analysis would amount to more than $7 million. You will notice, finally, that the scenario, that within this scenario, there is also the need to reduce the central administration by 14 positions to accrue a savings of approximately $1 million. This particular line item has generated a lot of questions and feedback. Rightfully, some community members have even asked, if worse comes to worse, whether we can eliminate the central office functions of the district entirely. A district the size of Lowell Public Schools needs a functional central office. We've discussed how lean the central administration already is, and in the fall, we restored multiple positions, which were cut previously, where the gaps in work were found to have left the district with high-risk voids in critical areas of operation. I see firsthand, each day, the important contribution that each and every staff member in our central office makes to our schools and community, but I'm a firm believer that we need to concentrate as many of the required cuts as possible, as far away from the classroom as possible, hence the identification of 14 positions you see in tonight's budget book. There were some adjustments made to the previous list based on feedback from the committee and the community, and with those adjustments, there are more 12-month positions on this list than the previous list. In a budget conversation of reductions and layoffs, it's important to distinguish between affiliated and unaffiliated personnel and 10-month and 12-month positions. Our affiliated personnel, by virtue of their collectively bargained contract, must be notified by certain dates, as early as mid-March in some cases, of any possible reduction. Our unaffiliated, non-unionized personnel do not have that same requirement. In each instance of position reduction, our goal is to offer another option for continued employment in the district to the affected employee. In almost all cases, the available positions are likely going to be 10-month positions. So the transitions for 10-month employees will be as smooth as possible, but that same seamless transition may not be possible for 12-month employees. In the case of a 12-month employee, moving from a 12-month position to a 10-month position, he or she would be unavoidably laid off for at least the month of July, and their paycheck would halt. Which brings me back to the detrimental impact I mentioned earlier, if the committee were to take action on this speculative scenario, as opposed to the 1/12 continuation budget for July. Essentially, we would be limiting services available during the summer and increasing unemployment costs for the district without the fiscal or contractual imperative to do so. Overall, while the approach to balancing the budget within tonight's scenario of level funding includes some options that are less desirable than any of us would like to even have to contemplate, they are the best options among a series of bad possibilities. And unfortunately, we will likely need to bring even more cuts to the committee in the future to balance whatever our actual budget turns out to be. With that said, due to the limited information currently available, and as we continue to build out different scenarios, as we plan for the worst and hope for the best, I recommend that the committee accept the scenario within the updated budget book as a report of progress and proceed with a 1/12 budget for July 2020, which continues the FY20 line item budget for an additional month at $14,948,595. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With that, I'll turn the microphone over to Ms. Turner.
I'm going to, um, before you start, why don't I have the registered speakers go first, and then we'll jump into the, Ms. Turner and the committee. Clark?
Jen Parasol.
Hi, thank you for allowing me to speak again. I first sent an email to all of the school committee people, so that I wouldn't have to speak again, because I knew there would be so many people wanting to speak tonight. I hope that all of you did receive the email, and I'm just stressing about keeping those two positions open. If you're unable to put a, a dollar amount in there, then just keep it blank for now, and when the funds are available, those positions will go to the people that are in the membership, so that they have promotional opportunities for their career. Thank you very much. Have a good night, stay safe and healthy.
Thank you.
Patty Clark.
Please speak.
I'll skip over and try the next one.
Art Santos.
Hi, this is Art Santos.
And Patty Clark.
Can everyone hear us?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, committee members, Superintendent and his, uh, committee. Uh, I'm Patty Clark Nowaziat, I am the LSAA Vice President, um, here with Art Santos, our secretary, um, and also, Arthur and I are both Lowell, um, people.
Born and raised.
Born and raised in Lowell, so we are Lowell voters. We just wanted to say thank you for this opportunity to speak on behalf of the budget and, um, as well as the reduction in staff. Um, as you know, uh, the Lowell School Administrators Association has been working diligently with the current, with the current superintendent, um, with tonight's budget, and we would like to, uh, express our concerns with the possible cuts to any LSAA staff member. Um, many of the cuts that Dr. Boyd has spoken of, um, have direct impact on students, and as we know, given the current situation with COVID, um, and the return to school in the fall, that our SEL, um, personnel are going to be more important than ever. Um, at this, at this point, we would like to, um, implore you to, uh, refrain from any budget cuts to the Assistant Director of Special Education, to, um, district support personnel. Um, we realize that it's a difficult budget, but we also know that both, all of these positions are quite valuable within the school community. Um, in particular, we, as we've heard in the past, the district's support personnel, um, have direct dealings with, uh, the community and parents. Um, we have, uh, ladies, um, women that are well-educated, with advanced degrees, who have served at the Lowell Public Schools well, who are also bilingual and are able to meet with our parents in their native language, um, helping them in many, many ways. Um, the, uh, positions, if cut, would, would go to, um, people with less education and less experience and without those connections to the community.
And licensing.
And that, without the licensing.
Um, and also, um, I appreciate the opportunity, if we would just move forward with the 1/12 budget, especially in light of the fact that the LSAA just today has extended our MOA until June 30th. So we're just hoping that we could just see what the figures are that come from the state and federal government before we decide on any cuts or potential cuts. And also, um, in particular, I just wanted to bring to light the fact that the Special Ed Department is going to be going through some extremely busy servicing time with our most vulnerable student population, and a reduction of one of the, um, Assistant Special Ed Director should not be supported in light of all the needs that our district has and our community needs. We need a Special Ed, um, Assistant Director to help assist the Director of Special Education. These are really harsh times right now, and we need all hands on deck. If anything, we need more support in that department, not less.
Thank you again for your time, um, and please, uh, stay safe and healthy, and, um, good luck with the, the budget process.
And thank you again for your time.
Thank you.
Elkin Montoya.
Are you there, Elkin?
They are connected, let me redial. They are on the phone.
Elkin, can you hear us?
Can you try again?
El, Elkin, are you there? No?
Anybody else?
Hello?
Oh, there you go, Elkin.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Elkin, you can speak.
I can't hear you.
You're all set if you can speak. Oh, all right, sorry, one second. How's that, is that better? Elkin?
Yes?
Yep, go ahead.
I, uh, I'm being recorded, right?
Yes, yep, go ahead.
Okay, the question that I, I'm interested to find out, uh, when it comes to the budget and, uh, and decision-making on who's, who is, uh, who will be, what kind of jobs will be eliminated? Is it a non-union? What kind of protocols, uh, have, um, established to decide who stays or who goes? Is that the people that have been there for many years, or the basis of the need of the community or the students?
Well, I mean, we're just going to go through the budget line item by line item and, and make decisions. It's not personal, we're not going by names, we're not going by, um, when they started, when they were hired, uh, it's just going to have to be a process that we go line by line.
Okay, by, line by line, and using a new protocol, or just is the protocol that's been used in the past?
It's a decision by the committee, all by vote, and, um, every community is going through the same, same painstaking process, uh. We may have to cut the budget, you know, anywhere from 10 to 20%, so we, we're just not getting the funding and we have to make some cuts.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Anyone else? One more, Maran?
There is, I'm waiting now for her to pick up the phone, I believe. I've tried calling several times. I just emailed the, the person. It doesn't appear that they're picking up the phone.
Okay. Who's the last speaker?
Mary Torres.
She just emailed a minute ago, asking when she'd get called. Start trying, trying really hard.
Okay. We'll give her one minute and see if you can reach her.
So she's the last call, just try it right on the phone.
Okay.
Please state your name after the tone, and Google Voice will try to connect you.
City of Lowell School Committee?
Hello, you've reached Mary Torres at Lowell.
Okay. Well, I guess we're all set then, we couldn't reach Mary. All right. So now that we have, um, the public speakers, um, why don't I ask what the wish of the body is for us to go into, um, line by line, or accept it for the month, so. Ms. Martin?
Well, I think based on our conversation, uh, last week, that we would be looking to do the, um, 1/12 budget first, and then begin the process for the full year line by line review. Um, you know, I will say, I understand people's resident, uh, reticence to kind of want to tackle this. I understand that, I don't have any great insights that anyone else does have, um, but I do think, having been through this process many, many times, I know the kind of questions that will be generated, uh, and I know that particularly in a, in a budget season like this, I think we have faber a servus if we start asking those questions now. Um, and then, you know, again, I think our process should be, anything that we do want to put up for consideration for cuts goes into the suspense account. We then have one account where all the, the questions will be, um, that we can then go back to when we get real numbers. So I just think that, you know, again, beginning with the 1/12 budget, I know that's what, um, our administration is recommending, I know it's what the city is looking for. So I think we should absolutely do that first, uh, but then we can begin the process of kind of, again, reviewing this very closely and, um, asking all of our questions now.
Thank you. Ms. Dougherty?
I would make that motion. Let's, uh, let's approve a 1/12 budget.
All right. Motion by Ms. Dougherty, second by Mr. Hoey. Roll call? Yeah, yep.
Uh, could I?
Yeah, I'm sorry, we'll do the total, what's the?
Could I ask a question first?
Sure, Mr.
Are we clear on what exactly we're, I mean, we had two different 1/12 budget options previously, right? Um, can, can we just make it clear exactly what we're voting on right now?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I can restate my recommendation, and I'm hoping that's the, that's the recommendation that's carrying with the motion. The recommendation is to proceed with a 1/12 budget for July 2020, which continues the FY20 budget line item, line item budget for an additional month. The total there, Mr. Mayor, is $14,948,595.
That, that's great, yeah, thank you, so, yeah, sorry, I just wanted to confirm, thank you.
So can you read that back with the number? Motion to accept it?
Sure, so it's motion to accept the 1/12 budget at $14,948,595.
Ms. Martin?
So just as a follow-up question, that requ, that's going to pay for the remaining salaries for that one month, and then opening up the contracts for all the special education contracts that we need to enter into this month. Okay. You might want to say yes, I appreciate the nod, but, thank you.
Okay. Uh, no more questions, roll call?
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoey?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Seven years approved.
All right, so now we'll get into the budget. So we'll start with page, page one, Administration.
Excuse me, Mayor.
Yep, Mr. Hoey?
Yeah, um, I'm glad we already approved, uh, the 1/12 budget, but I, I believe if we get into line item, uh, to line item, we might get in some arguments here actually tonight, on who wants what, and we don't even know how much money's coming yet.
Well, right, but what we're gonna do is just prepare, put, move money to the suspense account, and prepare for cuts that may have to be made. I mean, there's no doubt that we have to make some cuts.
Well, that's why, am I correct that there's no cuts with this budget, Mr. Superintendent, through you, Mayor?
The budget you just approved for the month of July, that's, that's correct. There's no, no cuts for that budget for the month of July. This budget in front of you, however, does include $6.7 million of cuts, but it, as you said, it's completely speculative. We don't know what the revenue will be.
And Mayor, that's one more point. That's my, that is my point. I believe if we start going into line item, line item, we might scare people. Right now, I don't think we need to do that. I think we need to have some patience, and I don't think we need to be going line item to line item tonight. And we didn't have a lot of support. I have no problem if the superintendent was gonna come back, like I seen on some blogs there, that come back and show us, uh, some different scenarios, you know, at 5 or 10 percent or 20 percent cuts, what they might look like. But if we go line item to line item tonight, I believe we're gonna need at least that three hours, maybe four, Mayor, so that's all I have to say right now.
Thank you. Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. I believe we had this discussion at length at our last meeting, and we could do a vote on it to see how people feel. But I know for me, the superintendent has made a number of recommendations here that I have questions about and need more information on. I think it's a starting point. I understand that we don't want to scare people, but the reality is, we need to start looking at this. Uh, and I think the sooner the better. We're not actually cutting any positions. As Ms. Martin mentioned, uh, if there are ones that we can agree on tonight, we put them in the suspense account. If there are ones that we need more information, we're asking for more information. So it's moving us forward until we have a better sense. And I do think, I know that you announced the LSAA, oh, no, I guess the callers announced, that the LSAA was extending their deadline to June 30th, but I thought we had a June 15 deadline that we have to give people notice of. So I, we're here tonight, we need to start the process, as uncomfortable as it is, and there's going to be disagreements, because we, basically, we all want to keep all the positions. I, I don't think there's one person here who wants to lay anybody off, but we have to start looking at it. So if we need to take a roll call on that, I think we should, but the plan was to start looking at the recommendations, have questions, if we have questions for more information, and for the superintendent to get a sense of, you know, where, where our concerns are.
Mr. Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know, I, I, I agree with Mr. Hoey about questioning the wisdom of speculation. And that's all we would be doing is spending the next three to four hours speculating on numbers that we have no idea what they're going to be. Yeah, I, I get the, the whole concept of due diligence about looking at the budget realistically, I get that. Uh, but the public has to be aware that we are doing our due diligence, that we are working very, very seriously on what we have to do going forward. I think, as, as, as Mr. Hoey said, coming up with, you know, well, we think we should cut this. Listen, I've been on that other side, where, uh, positions were announced, but then they weren't cut. Well, then something else wasn't announced, and that got caught. So until such time, in my estimation at least, until such time as we have concrete numbers, we can't talk about a budget. I'm sorry, we can't. Typically, we've been told when, uh, the state gives us their not, potential numbers that we're going to have to work with, then we have time to work on the budget. So when the state and the federal government numbers come in, that's when we should start working on the budget. Real numbers, with actual real numbers. And then we'll have an idea, we'll have a better sense, as will the, all of our unions and affiliated, non-affiliated people. Uh, I, I think we need to keep it that way. I, I, and I, if we have to do a roll call to, as to whether we should be doing this or not tonight, uh, so be it. Then, uh, I think we, we should going forward. Thank you.
Mr. Dillon?
Yeah, just on, maybe on the same kind of point as Mr. Dakota, um, we have to remember that we have no idea what school is gonna be like in September. I want, you know, it, it's great to think that we're gonna go back and, you know, this is, this is awesome, but we don't know. We could be, um, at home learning still, or we could be in school with all these stipulations, although you, you look at the stipulations, and they're, they're making it really difficult on our ability to operate at school. And with that still not clear, we're arguing over what. And so I, I think we should also, yeah, be very careful with, we don't know the end goal. We don't know what's, uh, support the kids are gonna need. I think, I think education, uh, no matter what it looks like when we go back, is gonna be very different. Um, and, and kids, we're not gonna just walk back into the school and, and have the same supports that we think a normal school year would require. Our kids are messed up. They've been, they've been inside for months. We're all going nuts. Uh, and so I, I agree that making these decisions and having these arguments right now, you know, seems silly in a way, I guess. That's just my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Clark, are you all set, or?
Uh, I just, as a first-time school committee member, I definitely, um, hear and understand the wisdom from Ms. Martin in terms of having done this many times, and how the conversation, uh, you know, needs to begin. And at our last meeting, I, I agreed. I thought that it made sense to start to go through and prioritize. You know, where we see things falling in the, the fall. However, um, we don't have any more information than we really did last week. If anything, it's more daunting, based on some of the new information, um, received about even going back to school, what that might look like, and the costs associated with that. Uh, it is a difficult conversation that we're just going to need to continue to have, and, um, I think even the prioritization is close to impossible, because we, we know all of these positions are needed to support our students and serve them, um, especially with what's going to be needed this coming academic year. So I think we're just in a tough spot, and, um, yeah, thank you. And I guess I would just point out again that this is another case of where we're trying to make decisions, or talking about making decisions without data, and how important it is to have data and information to make educated and informed decisions. And I'll just kind of go back to saying that I do really value that as we move into the next year, uh, about how important it is to get information in front of our decision makers, you know, good information on a regular basis so that they can make, um, well-informed decisions, which is something we, we do not really have right now, and it's, of course, out of our control, so, thank you.
Okay. Um, what are the guy, what are the, the dates for the notifications again? It's June 30th for the LSAA and June 15th for the teachers?
Yeah, it's June 15th for, uh, UTL. That's the nearest one coming. LSAA did notify us by signed memorandum of understanding their willingness to extend their date till June 30th. Dr. Hall, is there any other dates that we need to be aware of? There is, um.
All right, so if we don't go through the line item by line item tonight, then we cannot cut any teachers after tonight, because we won't meet again. And we'll be cutting all of, out of LSAA, I guess, right, so?
Not necess, not necessarily, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I'm just saying, out of those contract guidelines, um, we will not, we'll just, if we need to reduce staff in schools by teachers, we'll, we'll have to just use whatever retirements are available, right?
You still have the prerogative to notify teachers, uh, based on certain levels of experience that are non-program specific. That's been a strategy that's been utilized by this committee in the past, as well as other committees, that ultimately preserves your flexibility to make decisions into the future. Uh, it is something that I have discussed with UTL, because it was discussions that this committee's had in the past, not the current sitting committee, but past budget decisions historically here in Lowell. So you, we could make decisions as a organization to notify individuals of certain experience levels that are non-program specific, that reserve and preserve your flexibility with budget decisions going forward. In that case, what I would suggest is that perhaps we establish a meeting in the not-too-distant future, where we can contemplate that, uh, that conversation, perhaps within the guise of our bargaining conversations, following the advice of counsel. I would yield the floor to Dr. Hall, uh, for any further discussions, so that we don't violate our conversations and confidence through bargaining. So the short answer, uh, Mr. Mayor, is no, you don't lose that opportunity. That opportunity is still afforded to the committee. It's just how we proceed with that, that date that would change.
Uh, Mr. Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dr. Hall, do you get the sense that, uh, that at least for the short term here, uh, that the UTL and LSAA will all agree to keep pushing those dates further, uh, until not, real numbers come out, so that we can actually talk cogently about this?
Even so, with regard to the budget, you don't know how many or how much. I can tell you here, this is information that, again, is hot off of the press, so to speak. The analysis of $7 million, perhaps an increased cost that'll be absorbed, could be absorbed, or could be expected of school districts for some type of reopening scenario, that's on the expense side. That's not even contemplating the revenue side. So how far and how deep these cuts need to go, I would still recommend to the committee that you preserve utmost flexibility, depending on where they are. I think, uh, Mr. Dillon's made a couple of comments this meeting in the past one, that I want to make sure I can reiterate. Uh, one is, we want to make sure that we don't treat our employees like pawns. I think that was what you were pulling out, Mr. Dakota. I, too, have been on the other side of these conversations. They don't feel really good. And when you're told one thing, then told something else, you still have the memory of what you were told first. And then, Mr. Dillon tonight said, uh, reminded us that we don't know what the structure's gonna be in the fall. Hence, making programmatic decisions, uh, could be one way, if it's one scenario, could be vastly different. And we currently have organizations of teams working through those, that include parents and teachers and staff members. Uh, so with, when whatever decision that the committee takes that would be binding decisions going into next year, which that June 15th date would be, I would urge to maintain as much flexibility as possibly can be maintained, so that as information comes forward, the committee can make informed decisions, uh, based on that information. Did I capture your words correctly, Mr. Dillon?
Do you have, Mr. Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In the conversations that you've been having, uh, Mr. Superintendent, have you, um, with the scenario of doing a lot more remote learning, um, I, I think that, that it would behoove the administration to increase an awful lot of professional development for our staff going forward, uh, so that they can be better prepared, uh, going into next school year, if that's the way we have to go. Um, and, and, and I hope, I hope that our $2 million computer purchase becomes reality before we have to open. So, I mean, a lot of, a lot of what-ifs, still what-ifs. Um, so, thank you.
Ms. Doherty, did you? Ms. Martin, did you?
Um, you know, obviously, having gone to Lowell Public Schools, I know how to count, so I, I know what direction we're moving in. Um, I just want to say, um, to, to contemplate not doing anything is not due diligence, it's the exact opposite. To contemplate moving forward without getting information and just kicking the can down is not, uh, it, 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 it's just not best practice. I think we can have a conversation about how dire this situation is, um, and then to turn around and say, but we're not gonna deal with it, we're not gonna ask questions, we're not gonna try to have those difficult conversations, we're gonna wait, is, is, um, it's, it's simply beneath the honor of this, this body and the good work that it's charged with doing. Um, so, again, we can look forward to, I guess, next week, we'll get a recommendation to, to, in a vacuum, lay off hundreds of teachers, having not had any conversations. That seems challenging. Um, I think that's gonna be a difficult decision to make when we haven't looked in toto at the entire budget and what its implications are. Uh, and I think a lot of the questions that are gonna be brought to this committee, uh, are gonna be very difficult to make, when we have not had the opportunity to truly legislate and have the conversations here in public with, uh, and amongst ourselves and the public. Um, I think we're gonna be at a very, uh, extreme disadvantage. Thank you.
Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Your Honor, and I know this is my second time speaking on this issue, so it will be my last for this evening. I just want to remind people that we have suggested cuts in front of us based on a level budget, based on getting the same amount of money from the city and the same amount of money from the state that we got last year. That's an optimistic position. It also includes $4 million in federal money after we get, you know, so it could very well be much worse than this. And I understand, there's a lot of unknowns. I understand, uh, Mr. Dillon's comment about, we don't even know, is it gonna be remote learning? We should be looking at spending our money that we have on online supplies instead of textbooks. And, you know, we're starting to come up with, and I'm sure Ms. Desmond is doing this, working, what if it's a hybrid model? What, you know, the PD piece that Mr. Dakota mentioned. But to just go home and not have the conversations about the proposed cuts in front of us, when I have very specific questions and concerns about some of these cuts, and this is a starting point. You know, the, the superintendent and his team have put forward some suggestions for us that we could start asking questions about. Nothing is written in stone that we're gonna make those cuts, but we, I really believe we need to do the work. I really do. The, starting to talk about, because if you think we're gonna get more, then, I mean, I know Mr. Hoey is optimistic, and I tend to be a glass-half-full kind of person myself, but in the reality of the situation is, if we get what we got last year, plus that $4 million, I'm gonna be like grateful for that. But that still requires a significant amount, millions of dollars in cuts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hoey.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, all I want to add to what I feel is, one is, I was very, not shocked, but when we voted seven to nothing tonight to, uh, accept his recommendation for the 1/12 continuous budget, I got shocked a little bit, and I says, wow, I didn't believe we were gonna go seven-zero on that. I thought we were gonna fight line item to line item tonight. But then when Mr. Dakota said speculation, that's what triggered me, because that's all it is, man, speculation. And I think by going that extra month to the end of July, uh, I know we can't go that far. I was already just told we can only go to the 15th, but to me, time's dragging by. It's only the June 8th. I'm shocked that we didn't even play baseball. I'm serious. I'm a little upset over that. And just, it's just baseball. But, um, I'm glad you opened up this meeting tonight. It's pretty safe. Um, but I just think we should, uh, not, if we do go through line, line item to line item, I think we won't look that good as a school committee right now, when I think we're looking great. I think we're ahead on every, everything you look at. Zoom, I think we did better. We got out before the, it got bad. We're ahead of everything. I think we're doing better than the city council, and I think you're doing good as a mayor.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Dillon?
Yeah, I just have a problem with, uh, the suggestion that somehow not talking about it tonight is that, uh, it means that I don't want to work. That makes me pretty upset, so ask away. Now, you know, whatever we gotta do, let's go. Ask away. I just think it's, it's gonna, it's gonna be contentious, and, uh, we're gonna get a million emails tomorrow on speculation. So ask away. Go ahead.
Thank you. I'm gonna vote in favor, because I think what we're doing tonight is we're moving money to suspense account. We're not actually cutting. This is an open forum. It's an open discussion on what needs to be done. It doesn't necessarily mean that job is cut, that position is cut, that person is gone. What we're saying tonight, in my eyes, is that as a body, we've gotta make decisions. So let's talk about the decisions tonight, when we go through it line by, line by line. So let's talk about the decisions tonight, when we go through it line by line. And that's what we're doing.
Do we have a roll call?
Do we want to cut line item one? Maybe we do, maybe we don't. That's all we're doing, is we're talking. We're not actually making the decision tonight, but if we put stuff in suspense, it doesn't mean it's gone. It can come back over. So I'm going to vote because I think time's just going by too fast, and we should be doing some of this work tonight. So why don't we do a roll call?
There's no motion on the floor.
Oh, so we do a motion?
By Mr. Arty?
Motion by Ms. Martin, and second by Mr. Arty to go line by line.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
This is to start the process for the FY '21 budget line by line.
Motion to go through the budget tonight.
I know. Yes.
Ms. Arty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoi?
No.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota? Five yeas, two nays, motion pass.
Before we get started, I just, if you don't mind, if you indulge me, I got a, from the last speaker that registered to speak, she was unable to get on the line, and she sent a communication. I'll just read it quickly. It's from Mary Torres. Good evening, all. I had trouble on the phone tonight. I was, my name is Mary Torres. I work with the Lowell Alliance as a community organizer and family advocate. In the past several years, I've also worked with the Lowell Rise Coalition for refugee, immigrant support and engagement. Members have followed staffing needs for our immigrant families throughout this time and have come to the school committee several times to express the need to sustain supports such as newcomers, social workers, et cetera. I come to you today to encourage the committee to maintain Spanish-speaking bilingual family liaison positions. This position is so critical for the success of many of our district youth, especially now, and will continue to be essential as we enter into eventual phase of recovery. But we are not anywhere near there yet. This position supports 2,000 families who speak Spanish at home and beneath their responsibilities to the position maintains is wrapped up under any other position. These families will lose touch, will lose touch in their lives during that, what is still, for many families, a crisis period. Most of these families lack the social capital to get extra help navigating complex systems that sadly, historically, has treated them as an afterthought. Not only that, but I don't believe that the responsibilities can feasibly wrapped up under any position. This is a form that's firsthand experience in working with the community as well as through hearing testimony like that that you heard at a recent school committee meeting, the importance of these liaison roles. School committee and the district leadership, and in fact, most of our leadership bodies are in various stages of this process of identifying and implementing strategies to what most agree not only is the ideal, but also just providing the necessary supports for equitable access to all our families. I appreciate the budgetary constraints of COVID-19 has caused, but the fundamental goal and to so many of our minority communities is language access and consistent support. We need more, not less. Cutting the position would be a significant detriment to our community and would not model the district's priority for equity. Thank you, Mary Torres. Thank you. All right, so, into the budget, and we'll start on page one.
To clarify, do I?
All right, sorry. I got to read one thing. Sorry about that. Got it. Motion vote, a motion to vote for the action necessary because the school committee will be voting their own bottom line figure. So I need a motion by Ms. Arty, second by Ms. Martin. Can we do another roll call?
Yes.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Dillon?
Sorry, what?
So this is a motion to start the process. The school committee will be voting on their own bottom line figure.
For your salary. It's the salary line that you guys are, okay. Ms. Arty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoi?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
And now we're going to page one.
Page one.
Page one, any questions? Sure, Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. One of the things I was, and again, this is something that I think is up for discussion, and, you know, it's nothing I think that needs to be decided tonight, but I'd like to put it on the table for discussion. I think we're going to be in a situation where we're asking a lot of our staff at all levels, from every bargaining unit, every position within our district, to make a sacrifice. And I think that I'd like to go on record as saying that the Lowell School Committee would do the same, and perhaps we could make the decision to, for our salary line, reduce it by, I'm just going to say, $1,000 each. That could be kind of at least a show of solidarity, recognizing what we're asking of all of our staff, and that we see ourselves as part of, we hope, part of the solution. I'd make that in the form of the motion. In this case, we would just be putting that $7,000 into suspense, and we could reconsider a final decision at a later date.
Any other questions? Sure, Mr. Dillon?
Yeah, how are we just settling on $1,000? All right, well, I think we should have a little bit more conversation.
Sure. Mr. Dillon?
Well, all right, do we want to donate our whole salary? Is that? I don't know. What, you know?
Not me. I'm retired. I don't get that much money. I get paid once a month.
All right, so we're going to talk out our own personal finances on the floor? I'm comfortable with it, but it's just, you know, I'll do whatever. I'll give my whole check. But, you know, we're talking people's money here. You know, is this conversation going to happen right now? I don't know. I don't think I could go with it.
Okay. Anybody? Anybody else? Sure, Mr. Hoi?
I thought Ms. Martin made a nice suggestion. $1,000 apiece, it's a lot of money. I know I raised money to win this seat, and I donated to a lot of great causes. I don't spend a lot of money on my own campaign. So when you're retired and you only get paid once a month, $1,000 is not easy to give away, but I'd have no problem giving $1,000. If I was still making $100,000 working in the prison system, I could donate my whole check. I can't afford that. That's why I'm against any more than $1,000. That's all.
Okay. So we have motion on the floor, do a roll call?
So if we beat the $6,000, because you're not voting, that's okay?
Right, I'll do something separate than.
So it'd be to reduce the school committee line by $6,000 and move it to the suspense account? Okay. Mr. Dillon?
No.
Ms. Arty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoi?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Six yeas, one nay, approved.
Any other questions on this page? Sure, Ms. Martin?
I think we ask this every year about what the subscriptions are.
To mass association of school committees.
That's not memberships?
Yeah, that's, oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I'm not sure what's under subscriptions. I can find out.
That could be one of our questions. Thank you.
So now we make a motion, move $6,000 into the suspense account?
No.
Okay. So, motion to accept the recommended bottom line?
Reduced by?
Oh, reduced by.
Right. So I need a motion to accept the recommendation. I'm sorry, let me just ask. So we put? 7290. And this should be? All right. Okay, so I need a motion by Ms. Arty, second by Mr. Hoi, to recommend the bottom line of 97 to 90 on this, on page one. Roll call? Mr. Hoi.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Arty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoi?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Page two. Ms. Arty?
Thank you, and I have two quick questions on page two. The contracted services strategic planning for $50,000, that was a one-time consultant, right?
That's correct. You have to count for it, though, within budget line to budget line, so you'll see it's zero now, so you reduce it down from the base.
Okay, so it's not like we're cutting anything, we're just not going to have that contract for the new year?
Well, but, so recall that we actually, in the fall, we hired a part-time employee because it was more cost feasible for the district rather than the outside contract. That employee won't be renewed for this next year.
Okay.
So that is a part-time employee that we're reducing down.
I didn't realize that we had done that. So my question has to do with in-state travel district-wide, $31,000. Who's doing the district-wide traveling for $31,000?
It's reimbursement for staff that, can you hear me?
I'm sorry, with the mask, I can't.
That's reimbursement for staff that, you know, go school to school and to homes of the students.
Is that staff that has it in their contract, or is it?
Those that don't have it as part of their contract. LSAA, part of their contractual language, it says that they'll get reimbursed for travel.
Okay. Thank you. No other questions about this page?
Let me note something, if I could. This is your placeholder for the COVID-related expenses. I just want the committee to take note. The $600,000 could be as much as $7 million by the time we get final estimates. So I just want the committee to be aware that's purely a placeholder. That's why it's so broadly described.
And that number, the $600,000, just cover the costs of masks, right?
It's a broad estimate based on masks being one of them. We have masks, we have gowns, we have some other estimates that have come in significantly higher. We just haven't had a chance to fully assess it. And then again, I gave you the number that is the national number that's being utilized. The one number here, committee, that I want to make sure we're all aware of that could be exorbitant going forward, depending on what our transportation costs. I want the committee to just keep your eye and ears on what the state comes forward with in terms of its guidance for transportation. The current estimates of what can and is allowable for transportation could increase that even beyond the $7 million number, if the committee chose to go in that direction.
Thank you. Ms. Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just the contracted services?
The contracted services is for any services that the superintendent elects to do, such as, oh, one example would be, remember when you did the online policy, you know, the policy updates for the school committee? That would be one example. That's paid under that line.
So in FY '20, did we actually spend down that 23? I don't have the actuals in this format.
Yes.
I'm guessing we overspent, we spent more than that on outside?
We did.
Okay. So we don't know what the number is, the actual for FY '20?
The projected is $23,000. I mean, we're projecting to spend the full amount.
Okay, so, but that's, so in FY '20, that's what we're expecting to spend, is the $23,000?
Yes.
So it's nothing specific that's already been planned?
No.
And Ms. Turner, can you just repeat what you said? You said it was for like a policy book?
It's miscellaneous. It's actually, if I printed out a list, it's miscellaneous, but one example that I would say which was a large component is the school committee a couple of years ago elected to upload all of the policies and have our policies online. And so that's one example of one of the costs that would be into that line.
Any other questions on this page? I just had a general question then, too. Through you, the superintendent, if it comes down to it, are we prepared to maybe reduce the number in your office by maybe 160?
It wouldn't be my recommendation at this time, but again, given the status and the current unknowns, I'm prepared to make any, to continue with the full analyses required of us as a school district. Wouldn't be my recommendation at this time, no.
Okay. So just for the sake of discussion, I'm going to make the motion to reduce this page by 160. And did we say we could look at the contracted services district-wide for $23,000? Yeah, so I would make a motion to reduce by 160 and the $23,000. So one.
Can I ask, so we're transferring these to the suspense account, though?
Yeah, just moving for discussion.
Not reduce, so it's not a cut, it's just a transfer.
Yeah, yeah, sorry. All right, I didn't mean to use that word. So I make that motion. Is there a second? Mr. Arty? So what would, well, let's do the vote first. The roll call.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Arty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoi?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
No.
Mr. Dakota?
No.
Five yeas, two nays, motion passes.
So then we make a motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the bottom line figure of?
I want to make sure I'm clear. That's not the superintendent's recommendation. The minutes should not reflect that. There are contractual obligations here which would prohibit that move. So I just want to notify the committee that can't be operationalized in any way that would be legally allowable. There are contractual requirements there. But for purposes of this exercise, by all means, we can discuss it. I just want to make sure the minutes reflect that there's no recommendation from me, so we can be clear.
So let me just say that I was advised that contracts are contingent upon funding, so not going to argue it, but this is an exercise point. Sacrifices will have to be made out of every corner of this budget, so. And the wording, I guess, is just what the wording is, right, Clerk? Ms. Clerk? Mary?
Yes.
The wording is what the wording?
To reduce the superintendent's page by 183,000 and to put it in the suspense account.
Okay. Do you have a final number there? You're the one with the calculator going up.
I guess that's right.
All right, so.
It doesn't seem like it.
Yeah, Ms. Jarni?
If I could just recommend, usually the number would come from the finance person so that the secretary is not trying to keep track of the motions. I don't know, Billy Joe, if you need a calculator there with you to do that, Ms. Turner.
I have a spreadsheet, so.
But if we make, like, we just made a reduction, we just transferred 183,000. So if she does the math, then can tell you, then we can vote on the bottom line, and that's how we've done it in the past. I think it's a lot on the clerk to be trying to do the math and do the motions. You like me now?
All right.
Aren't the two proposed cuts 173, not 183?
It's 160 plus 23.
150, right?
160.
160.
160 plus that, so 183. So what's the bottom line, Ms. Turner? Okay. And we'll move the 183 to the suspense account.
So you need a motion and a second?
Right. Motion. Motion, right, by, can I make a motion?
No, you already did that.
Except the bottom number.
Right, seconded by Ms. Dough--
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right, roll call.
No, that we--
We have to make a motion on the bottom number. Yeah.
We've already made a motion to transfer it. So I make a motion on the bottom number, which Ms. Turner just said, 1,500, whatever it was, if you want to say it again.
Second it? Yeah, I'll second.
Okay.
So roll call.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoey?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
No.
Mr. Dakota?
No.
Five yeas, two nays, motion passes.
Okay, page three. Sure, Ms. Martin?
We already eliminated this 45,000, right, for the Council for Collective Bargaining?
You've eliminated 45,000. There's a $90,000 contract line. You may not be able to assume this savings now. I've got to go back through a full analysis. This savings assumes the prior page that would enable you to redesign our chief operating officer's job description, so that he could absorb these savings. So this was the conversation I've been having in the past. One savings assumes the other. If we take one line item out, that makes another line item not perhaps possible. So before, your structure was to have a litigation, an attorney, on contract for $90,000. Right now, you have a chief operating officer that allows us to reduce this down. He has opened up the possibility that we can redesign his job description to include legal services as he's been practicing. That would then, with three contracts open, in his estimate, allow us to reduce that down to 45,000. There are still any number of possibilities when you're negotiating that number of contracts that would require us to perhaps contract outside counsel. So, may not be able to absorb it, but at this point, I don't know that I can continue to recommend those savings either. That would assume the prior page. So you pay for the prior page, now you can reduce down in this page. There are many other savings within that that also assume those same savings. Anything that we do has to be rolled into somebody else's job. So I just want to put that forward. All of these savings were predicated upon other jobs assuming responsibilities. This is one where it would be the chief operating officer assuming those responsibilities. That would be a revised job description that would have to come to the committee. And I have to go back through and analyze what was the previous recommendation of the past page before I can recommend this one now.
Sure, Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Recognizing your point, Mr. Superintendent, but also recognizing that the dire circumstances we find ourselves in are going to require many changed job descriptions, without question. So, I mean, I would recommend that we move that existing 45,000 into the suspense account, and as we work through all the other decisions and questions, we can then consider that. If hiring someone in addition is going to be prudent when we get a better sense of things. So I'd make that motion to move that 45,000 for the .5 whatever FTE, or, yeah, .5 into the suspense account.
Seconded by Ms. Dougherty. Sure, Ms. Dougherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. So I have a different recollection, and I don't have the job description off the top of my head, but I know when we created the position of chief operating officer, one of my concerns, you know, at that time, was having all these new chiefs. When we were such a lean district to begin with, we had come off several really difficult years of, you know, bills not paid, everybody knows what happened with that. My understanding was the litigate, the labor piece was going to, collective bargaining was going to roll into that position, that that would be included. And the other part of it was, for years prior to 90,000, it was always considered a part-time position. Collective bargaining is not something that happens full-time, 40 hours a week. We always had it contracted for 50,000, whether we had Mr. Hall or we had somebody else prior to that. We even at one time looked at hiring a Boston law firm that all they do is school committee collective bargaining. And that was the price, 50,000. So it went up to 90 in the prior administration, the, not the interim administration, the one before that. I think because we had depleted, we had no one in HR. So we had a lot of issues with our labor, grievances, things that were being worked out, things that weren't being handled, because without an HR office, how could you? You know, so I am going to support this motion of putting that into suspense, but I don't see it realistically as coming back. I don't think it's something that we would--
Your recollection is the chief HR officer that was cut. So each of these positions, if you recall, we cut other positions. So the chief HR officer was cut, the assistant superintendent of student services was cut, the deputy superintendent stipend was cut. So those positions were all cut. Those responsibilities were absorbed then within. This position was not, because at that time, when we brought that forward, it wasn't yet filled. We didn't predicate the chief operating officer position on it having to be a lawyer. We just happened to take advantage of those efficiencies, because we happened to appoint Dr. Hall to the position. So the, I believe the position you're recalling us eliminating was the chief HR officer?
No, I was very aware of it, and I, that's why I went along with it, because I thought that it was a kind of a two-for thing. We'd get that collective bargaining piece within, you know, this larger structure.
Thank you. But I'm seconding that motion.
Okay. Any other questions on this one? All right, roll call.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoey?
No.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
No.
Mr. Dakota?
No.
Four yeas, three nays, motion passes.
Any other questions on this page? Okay, so bottom figure of--
Bottom line is 2,454,056.
Could you just repeat that one more time for the clerk? Okay, so I need a motion to recommend, motion to accept the recommendation of superintendent to approve the bottom line of--
2 million. Yeah. Just get that back.
Yeah, 2,454.50, you said?
56.
Yeah, 56. Okay. So I need a motion by--
Again, I don't think-- It's a recommendation of the superintendent. I think it's a, the motion would be to accept the bottom line number, but it's not a recommendation from him, because he's not, he hadn't recommended it, right?
All right.
We're just, we're just agreeing to the bottom line number when we do the math.
All right, there's just a question on, this is my first time doing the budget--
You're doing a great job, I'm sorry.
--between the clerk thinking what the proper wording is and what we think it is.
Well, it's the administration's recommended budget. You're making changes, but they're, that's how it's always been in the past. I'm not saying it can't be changed.
But can't we just vote on the bottom line?
Yeah, we are.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can we vote on the bottom line without using that word?
Yeah, sure.
Sure, okay. All right, thank you. Sure. Okay.
I'm just going by past practice, that's all.
Okay. All right, so now we need a roll call, right?
Yeah. I know, you need a first and a second now to go with them.
I need a second. The bottom--
Okay, so a second on the bottom, Ms. Martin. Yeah.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoey?
No.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
No.
Mr. Dakota?
No.
Four yeas, three nays, motion passes.
Need to get better staples.
I have a point of information. I think the TV one O, so, I'm going to start recording.
Okay.
The TV supposedly one O, or--
Are they recording over there?
They're doing it remotely. Okay, thank you.
They're recording, because this is--
It's being televised live remotely, not actual--
You just said, were you saying--
But it went out, so he's going to start recording it.
Okay. I mean, I just think for the public--
Yeah, yeah. Okay. So page four, finance and operations. Any questions? Ms. Martin?
So in terms of the fair student funding, I know we had allocated, this was a $50,000 consulting fee, correct, in this current year? And you're anticipating needing it, 10,000 in the next year? What would be the reasoning behind that?
So they helped design a system--
Right.
--that's, that helped us determine school site budgets for this current year, but in order to tweak it and do all of the things that we find that we're encountering now, we thought we would need $10,000 to work with them to do year two, because there wasn't a lot of training involved. It was a lot of speed, we did a speedy, you know, situation of just getting it done and not a lot of training, so.
So the thought process would be, with this 10,000, in addition to providing some of the services, they'd also be training an internal person who could then take responsibility for it?
Me.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure, Ms. Dougherty?
Through you, too, Mr. I have a question. I noticed that the photocopier maintenance service, it went from 75,000 to 205. Am I reading that correctly?
Yes. It, but underneath it, you see that the photocopy purchase of 52,000 was eliminated. We're doing full leases now, so this is part of the contract that we accepted last year.
So what are we looking, so in terms of the upcoming, the next school year that we're budgeting for, what, is there a savings in that? Because then it went to 130, and we lost the 52 because we're leasing, I see. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions on this page?
We paid basically 125 in FY '20 combined?
Yes, but if you could recall, that had been slashed. When I first started, that was one of the accounts that had been slashed.
Yep.
Historically, they would make a big investment in new purchases each year, and that hadn't, that had--
Hadn't happened.
And so now, we now have full lease, rather than buying, we're going to lease the same amount each year.
Okay, so this 205 is going to be kind of a standard moving forward?
Yes.
No, it's 78, isn't it?
No, it's 205,000.
Oh, the change, I see, okay.
So no questions, I need a motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent, because there's no cuts, to approve the bottom line figure of 847-228. Motion by Ms. Dougherty, seconded by Mr. Dillon. Roll call.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoey?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Okay, page five, instruction. Any questions? Sure, Ms. Dougherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. In terms of the assistant director of special education position, what is the plan? I mean, I think that, given we very well be looking at a hybrid, or at least some sort of remote learning, how are we going to continue to support our continuing, our special education students with less leadership in that area?
So you actually have one assistant director remaining. This is actually a position that we've only had for a few months. Remember, this was part of the restored cuts from this past August. So all of, nearly all of the positions from this past August were restored cuts of previous. This was one of those. You haven't had them for a few years. We've had it for a few months, going back to the one assistant director, given the number of cuts that we have to assume, we believe to be most prudent. But again, I'll have to tell you, I can't actually stand by any of the cuts, because there is a ripple effect throughout. Some of the assumed responsibilities here would fall to Ms. Desmond. Again, the committee just asked me to assess 160,000 of additional cuts. I don't know, is the real answer. Should this, every one of the decisions falls to another, so some of the work here is assumed by Ms. Desmond. Ms. Desmond was part of the conversation you just previously had.
So this position, has somebody who's in this role only for a few months, then?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
There aren't two positions showing in the FY '20 budget, though.
There are two positions. If you look at the top line, bottom line, so if you miss, so look at their two parallel, you see them right next to each other, side by side? One is turning to zero, one state remains at one.
In the left, the whole of the left side.
So there's two on the left and only one on the right.
So there's a director of special education--
Correct.
And then there's an assistant director of special education.
Correct.
And in the first column, that's listed as one.
And then there will be a column to the right.
So one more column to the right gives me a total of 102,000.
Yeah, then there will be another one.
That says one.
There will be one, or 113.
Oh, okay, okay, I'm sorry. And so your totals at the bottom, then, are totaling 2.3 million, and then the 316,000 of additional positions? Does that then go into that 2.3?
Ms. Turner?
Is that included in that?
Which, the savings?
Well, in that last column, which says grant offsets--
Mm-hmm.
So the grant offsets, then, this new position was paid for by a grant. So it's not then continuing, continued, considered, I'm sorry, part of our general fund, correct?
So there were two assistants, assistant sped directors. One was paid from the general fund, that was the new position. We eliminated that position, that's why you now see a zero in the general fund in FY '21.
And, okay.
But the grant position stayed. We're going to continue to pay for one assistant director, assistant sped director through the grant.
So when we tie that out to the final total, are both those represented, or is it just the local funds, just the general fund?
The general fund no longer has one in there, so the gen--
So it would be separate, okay, okay.
Any other questions on this page?
I just would reiterate, that wouldn't be the recommendation, again, because there's a ripple effect throughout. I want to remind the committee, there was actually a decision made of the committee at one point that was not sustainable, that we had to revise in the fall, that was creating a position, assistant business manager for transportation. So there are decisions ultimately that can be made with the budget that are unable to be operationalized. We had to revert and pull that position back, create, as you see on the previous page, the deputy CFO that we had to create in the fall. We're recommending you maintain the deputy CFO, but that's an example of, decisions can be made here that can't be operationalized. So I want to remind the committee, the decisions made prior were all rippling into the decision here. I don't know, with some of these positions that I was recommending to cut, whether I would continue to recommend them. These were the most cuts I could recommend centrally, so we could sustain operations. All of the work of the cuts essentially was going to be absorbed in large part by the people that you're seeing in front of you. So by cutting them, we're going to need people at lower levels in the organization that will increase the cost of the organization.
Any other questions on this page? So motion to recommend, motion to accept the recommended, recommendation of the superintendent to approve the bottom line of 1,724,530. Motion by Mr. Dillon, seconded by Mr. Hoey. Roll call.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Howie?
Yes.
Mira Lahey?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Okay. Page six, Principal School Leadership. Any question?
No, we just did five.
We just did page five, yep. Questions on page six, Principal School Leadership? So I had one question, Ms. Sure, Ms. Doherty?
Well, I just wanted to get an explanation on the proposed cuts. We're going to eliminate one Assistant Principal and one Student Services Specialist for the Freshman Academy at the high school? Is that what we're looking at? No?
So.
It's like we're adding them.
Adding one.
We're adding?
At the last page that you're going to see, there's a $1 million increase to school site budgets. That previously was $2 million, which means we've got to go through a process where school sites will identify how they're going to now reconcile a $1 million increase versus a $2 million increase. We've got a couple of ways that we can reconcile that centrally. This was put forward with only 12 hours, I believe, of analysis from our Wednesday meeting to Thursday's needed posting of this. We just unfortunately couldn't operationalize that analysis. So that's why you'll see a line item at the back end. That's that $1 million adjustment that's not realized in each of these items. All right.
I, when we discussed it last week, we did talk about trying to, the whole idea of holding schools harmless, right, in equity, that we were going to keep with the equity piece, that there was, when you come up with that million in cuts, that we would be looking at those schools who had more than other schools based on their population and their staff, right?
Yes. We have engaged in that process of analysis.
Okay.
Unfortunately, it wasn't ready to bring forward here tonight.
Thank you.
Any other questions on, Ms. Martin?
So then the addition of the Assistant Principal position, is that, how does that interact with the school site budget process?
Any school-based position is essentially a decision of the school site councils. So on the back end, you'll see if you go to the last page, there's a placeholder for a reduction overall to school-based budgets. If ultimately, when we move it through the algorithm, which is part of the analysis, that particular school has to consider or contemplate a cut, they may look at that. It may be, as we move through, as Ms. Doherty said, discussions that may not involve that school. We just have to go through that analysis, which is why we just, we just accounted for it in one lump sum of $1 million at the back end.
Okay. Thank you.
Kind of along the same lines as the placeholder you have on the COVID expenses or the placeholder you have on the CBA that you'll also see.
Million on that back page as, as one number?
Yes, that's correct.
So then it's not being counted then against the general fund?
Ms. Turner?
So the 2 million, the 2,74,000?
Right.
That would be reflected in this type of thing, like add one Assistant Principal. But because we haven't had a chance to work with them yet to see what they would like to cut, they have to go through a school site council process again, we did as a placeholder a minus $1 million because we don't know where. They might decide to cut a teacher and keep the Assistant Principal. But the, when you ask the question about how did that, how did that come from fair student funding, one school elected to add a second Assistant Principal, and that's why there's one being added here.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure, Mr. Howie?
Yeah, on page six, just for conversation, I think when we look at what's coming down the pike and everybody's talking all these cuts, I think we're going to have to look at a Vice Principal someday. There's 22 of them. You're going to a school site council shortly. I think if we're going to make that work, every, every principal has to have total power on who his Vice Principal is. I think right now, they, they have to work with some that they don't want to work with. I think it's been a problem for years. But I think when we go to look, if we have to cut a lot of things, we might look at cutting Vice Principals. And when I say that, I think the principal could look for a teacher inside that school that has a lot of knowledge and a lot of, just smarts, street smarts, especially when it comes to busing problems and discipline problems. They probably could find a teacher with 15 or 20 years in, give them a stipend of maybe 30,000 on top of their pay, and save 80,000 per 22 Vice Principals. So we could possibly, if we have to cut a lot of money, we might have to look at, I hate to say it, Vice Principals. Just for conversation, I wanted to bring it up.
Okay. Thank you. I had a question on the bridge, the Career Academy and the CSA day school. How come the, I guess, how come there's deductions there or reductions?
There aren't any reductions except for when I reconciled salaries this year to make sure that everything was accurate. You might see a reduction of 887.
Yep.
But the rest of, but all the positions are still funded.
Right, but why did they get a reduction?
They didn't get a reduction. It was just me reconciling, doing actuals. I went into Munis because the budget last year had stuff that was quite confusing, and I went in and did a reconciliation to their actual salaries in Munis. So if, let's say this 119,000, that was a play, like some, an amount that was in the budget before, and then when I went into Munis, I found that it was 118,662. So it's me just fixing.
All right, so last year, that wasn't their accurate salary?
Right. It was just, everything that was in the budget was just built with a raise on top of whatever was in there. I went through and did line by line comparisons.
Okay. And then Student Support Service Specialist at the Freshman Academy, where that was a recommendation to add another?
Yes.
What is that, like a, an assistant?
Student Service Specialist.
Ms. Desmond or Dr. Gillery can answer that question?
What's the, at the Freshman Academy, what's the Student Service Specialist position? Sure.
So there were two Student Support Specialists that support the Director of the Freshman Academy a few years back. We reduced that by one.
And now we're going to add another one?
The school site councils recommended with the head of schools and the team during the, when they were reviewing the 899,000 increase to restore that position.
All right. So what we were saying is that these are, that money is going to be cut somewhere else, so it's a wash, basically?
That.
Not really adding to the budget, or are we?
The school, yes, the Lowell High School and the, you remember, in the fair student funding allocation, had about an $800,000 increase to Lowell High School. There's an increased number of students as well as the number of cuts that they've received over the prior years. There was an increase of approximately 800,000. But again, there's going to have to be a contemplation of all schools once we rerun the algorithm because there's a million dollar difference between what we're increasing by now and what we were increasing by before. So it still includes a million dollar increase. It may or may not impact Lowell High School. It depends on how the committee wants to accumulate that, that change, that difference. You can assume with it being that high of an increase for Lowell High School that they will be impacted, but I don't want to presume what ultimately will be the outcome.
Okay. Sure, Mr. Howie?
Yes, through you, the Superintendent, Ms. Desmond was right. They cut that position a few years back. But that Freshman Academy, if you, I know we all know this, but it is where all your middle schools feed into that school. And those people are mainly to keep control over the school. That's how I feel. It's almost like a Vice Principal. It's like they need two of them. They bring a lot of middle school problems into that school and staff. That's one of our jewels, by the way. And if you look at how much that person was getting paid to run that school compared to some of our alternative schools that are making the same money, I have a problem. Even in our administration, I have a problem. There's a few people that I think are being underpaid.
Okay.
And we have to fix those things. We all know that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Ms. Clark?
Thank you. I think, actually, what I'm going to say probably refers back maybe to the page before, but I think in general, especially going into this year with the cuts that we perhaps are looking at, I'm thinking back to a conversation we had earlier this year about a grant-funded position that seemed to align with the work we were doing with our pathways. And I think especially going into this year, we really need to ensure that we are taking advantage of grant money that is coming into the district and being quick to move if it is aligning with the work that we're trying to do to support our students and help them become successful. Because I know at that time, we really dragged our feet, and I don't think in the end, anything has really come of it. We've lost that money. But I think where we see opportunities to make use of grant money to support student success, we need to act and we need to act quickly. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Howie, did you have an, no, I mean, Ms. Doherty?
I think, I want to just support what Ms. Clark said. I think that's absolutely essential. When we get grant money and we do a good job with it, that opens the doors for more grant money. And it's really, everybody benefits from that. I also wanted to point out when we're talking about the Freshman Academy, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought I heard that they're looking at 100 additional freshman students in the fall. Is that correct? Ms. Desmond is, so, go ahead.
So we have essentially a bubble class in our eighth grade that's moving up to ninth grade.
So when you think about that year, as Mr. Howie said, is critical. You get their first year of high school, the first freedoms of being in high school. We've got to engage those kids right from the get-go. That's when we start to lose them. If we can't keep, you know. So I think that, that may be a very justified increase if there's going to be 100 more students over there. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you. All right. So with no changes on this, we need a motion to accept the rec, Ms. Martin?
Did have a question. So in terms of the principal merit increases, will those be paid out entirely this year?
This current year?
Yep.
Yes.
And that's the exact amount?
Yes.
It just seems very specific, like who got the 57 bucks?
Yes.
Okay. So is it tied to, what is it tied to within the contract?
Some principals got a merit increase of 1% and some just had it built into their contracts, a different, you know, a different rate. So whatever their contractual increase was in their contracts. Is that what you're?
Kind of. I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, you know, in terms of when we're trying to save as many positions as we can, are we in a position to maintain merit increases, you know, when we're trying to get down to the bare bones? So, I mean, that's a, but I don't know how it's phrased within the contracts.
Right. So currently, with the existing contracts that haven't expired, they do have room for merit increases.
And there's a metric that they have to meet to?
Right.
Okay. I would just say that, you know, I'm fine to leave it there for now, but we should have that conversation.
Ms. Doherty?
Sorry, I just want to, I think that's why I'm not in a big fan of merit increases in contracts, but I would actually like to make a motion asking the Superintendent to explore all the potential cost-saving measures, including but not limited to furloughs, freezes of increases of both union and contracted employees. To let, let's look at that.
Yes, those have been contemplated, and you actually have included in here the expectation of one furlough day. That's within here. There has been a hiring freeze since mid-April.
I'm talking about freezes on increases.
Yes.
So contract step increases. I know we've talked about furloughs. I'm expanding it to say, why not pursue all these other avenues and see if it could save jobs?
It's all currently under consideration, but I have to ask, we're talking about saving jobs, but this committee just laid off people by necessity of decisions that I'd have to make here.
We're putting them in the suspense account.
All right, let me make sure.
I know you're taking it personal.
I'm not taking it personally.
We have to look at everything, and we're putting it in, we haven't made any cuts today.
I think I'd be remiss if I don't share with the committee the operational implications. I will be obligated as a supervisor within this organization to notify any employee that's affected. Employees will look elsewhere. Employees will find jobs elsewhere. Employees would be not doing right by their families if they didn't. So having these conversations publicly, I believe, is what Mr. Dakota was getting at, what Mr. Dillon was getting at, when they were saying that there are real implications. There is no such thing as a suspense account in terms of the reality of the organization. That's on budget on paper. So anybody we put into a suspense account is somebody I'd be obligated to have conversations with. So yes, on terms of the paper, it doesn't. In terms of operationalizing it so that I can bring something back to you that meets it, it does. Because anybody here that's been discussed, we've had those conversations with, I will be obligated, personally responsible to have those conversations with people. So I just want to make sure that the implications that the committee is considering, there seems to be a contradiction between what I'm hearing and what the actions I'm seeing taken. Thank you.
If I could just be clear about my.
Can I just add one thing?
I, I have a motion that I want to be clear about. I want to expand, not just looking at furloughs, looking at the increases for both union and contracted employees. Because I think it would be quite a substantial amount of money that would save jobs. I just, that's my motion to just, to explore all potential cost-saving measures, including but not limited to furloughs, freezes on increases both with the union and our contracted employees. So you don't get that merit. Everybody agrees. We don't get those step increases, whatever.
Right.
And we save millions of dollars. That's my motion, to pursue it, explore it.
Is there a second for the motion? Sure. Okay. Motion by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Ms. Martin. Do you have them? Sure, Mr. Dillon?
Can we speak?
Sure, go ahead.
So can we, what, can we, what's, Joe, Mr. Superintendent, are these not scenarios that you have already gone through?
Yes. Matter of fact, they're all in consideration. All have been brought to our union partners. They all are certainly things in discussion. But I'm going to, I'd yield the floor to Dr. Hall to make sure I don't negotiate in public here for any further details, if you need, on Mr. Dillon.
Sure. I'm just concerned that it's redundant and these are things that you have already looked into and those numbers are already things that you've looked at, potentially?
They're all within consideration with our union partners.
It's not redundant because I've mentioned contracted employees. That's not redundant.
Can we take a, any other questions? Roll call.
Mr. Dillon?
Nope.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Howie?
No.
Mira Lahey?
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Ms. Clark?
No.
Mr. Dakota?
No.
Three yeas, four nae, motion fails.
What? Okay, all right. I just want to remind everybody that this is an exercise that nobody wants to do, all right? It's our obligation to come up with a budget that is responsible. It is the Superintendent's job to follow what we do. We are the bosses for the community, and we're making hard decisions. No one wants to do this. So I don't think anybody should take this personal tonight. They're all up for discussion. It's not permanent. And I don't think, Mr. Superintendent, that you have to have a personal conversation with anybody tomorrow. These are all on the table. These are all realities that we're going to have to go through. We used to have, 10 years ago, we only, we survived with three Assistant Superintendents and far less people in our, in our organization. So nothing is personal. We're always striving to move ahead. We're trying to do the best we can. When we get more money, we're adding positions. But unfortunately, we don't know, from what I can gather from other school districts, they're cutting up to 20%. Nobody wants to do that. But this is an open forum. It's an open discussion. Nothing's going to be behind closed doors, and it's the public's money. So we have a public discussion, and everything is on the table. So that's all we're doing here tonight. We're trying not to make this personal. I feel just as strong about certain issues here tonight, sped, whatever. So just trying to do our job. It's a discussion, and we'll move forward. Mr. Dillon?
Yeah, can we just, maybe I just don't like the way we're doing it. Can we just clarify what exactly it is that we're doing by, you know, any of the decisions that we just made? Because, you know, looking at it page by page and voting page by page, I think this is probably part of where the Superintendent's coming from, is, you know, it's not, it's not helpful to the overall budget for us to just go page by page and, you know, discuss things that we could do without. Because, you know, how can we have that conversation if we're not tying it into the overall budget? And we're not comparing positions to each other and like what's needed and what's, are we just trimming right now? Like, do we have a goal, like how much money we're trying to cut? And I think we need to talk about that before we even move further, if we could.
Sure. I think, I mean, this is kind of traditionally what we do. We kind of give suggestions on where we feel we can trim down in the budget. It's up to the Superintendent to take a look at the recommendations and come back with recommendations. So what we're doing tonight is we're moving money to the suspense account. These are things that, you know, as a new person, yeah, you're going to fight for what you believe in. Some of the people here that have more experience are going to say, I understand what's going on, but I, through experience, I feel a little bit different about this, so I'm going to vote a different way. And then in the end, we're going to come together with the, hopefully, a responsible budget. But we've got to fight for our money through the state, through the city, just, you know, every year we do this. So unfortunately, we're in a bad situation financially. We don't know what monies are coming in, but we do know we're not getting the same money we got last year. Mr. Howie, do you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. No disrespect to you either, Mayor, but you've been gone 10 years.
Yep.
10 years is a long time. One person that I. One person that I, I listen to a lot is obviously is Jay Lang, I love listening to him, and Jerry Nutter. And he sent me a message an hour ago and I missed it, but he said, why don't you suggest that maybe you ask questions that people have based on this presented budget, but not necessarily go line item by line item? I wish I'd brought that out an hour ago, I didn't see it. But through you, Mayor, to the superintendent, just to get me caught up to some things that I have in my head right now, how many teacher cuts overall in these proposed cuts, teachers?
You don't have any in the proposed cuts, I don't believe. Ms. Turner, is there anything in the school-based, school site decisions around cutting teachers?
No, there was a reallocation of teachers. You would see a shift in like, English teachers might, may have gone down, but elementary teachers went up and it's based on doing the school site budgets, we allowed them, someone could say, well, they're not going to do a health teacher this year, they're going to do a STEM teacher. So you see a fluctuation in that way, but we actually went up over 20 teachers.
Ms. Darney?
Yes, and I just, I have a feeling that there's three music teachers that might have been let go or we cut. And I'm not trying to get Mr. Dakota going, but we're sure that no teachers have been cut, correct?
As a matter of fact, the band teachers are right here on the sheet, they're still there.
All righty, thank you.
But I thought we left it up to the school site to rearrange their schedule, so we could be not having a few teacher positions filled, right?
If they chose, if the...
If they chose, yeah.
If the school sites chose.
Okay.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I could, help me with some guidance as to what you're hearing in terms of my feedback that's personal. I believe I'm sharing with you how this organization runs and providing recommendations on how we can implement the suggestions that are coming from the committee. I think it is my responsibility as superintendent to provide you recommendations on things that can be operationalized. I am sharing with you, in order to operationalize these conversations, any conversation here, I'm obligated to have a conversation with an employee, not obligated by direction of the committee, obligated by my responsibility as a supervisor and as the chief executive of this organization. That's not a statement in terms of taking it personally, it's a statement of fact in terms of how we operationalize these discussions. Any discussion of any dollar amount that's placed into suspense that relates to a position, that's a conversation with an employee. That's a negotiation with an employee, that's a negotiation that could actually lead to increased costs, not lesser costs, and I do believe it's my responsibility to share that with the committee. I'm not aware, Mr. Dillon, as to what bottom line we're working towards, hence my recommendation prior to entering these conversations.
Thank you. Mr. Howie?
Yeah, not to keep going on it, but maybe the schools cut three teachers. That's where I'm probably getting that information. Huh? Yeah.
They added something else?
No, if they did cut a music teacher, they may have added a STEM teacher. They still have the same allied arts, and that's what I meant when I said we did school site budgets this time, so we went school by school and whatever they chose, and we added them up, but we added all of the totals, so these totals reflect everything that the schools chose. But we didn't cut the band teachers, when he was talking about the central office, I mean the centrally funded band teacher.
Well, no, I think you were talking about music teachers.
Yes.
Which I've heard too, that music teachers were cut, and it reflects right here where we used to have 31 and now we have 28. So, I mean, it, that's just a, a fact.
Can you bring back the answer to that question? Or do you have that, Ms. Desmond, on top of your head? No, I'm seeing so we'll bring it back.
I believe it's at the STEM Academy, correct?
We'll bring it back.
Find out specifically. Oh, okay.
On the next line, you're showing that the other three, those three positions, those three band teachers add up to 31.
What page? Let me help the committee out here. What page are you on?
We're on page seven.
Well, all right, we're on page six still, right? We didn't, we didn't vote on page six yet. We're on page seven.
Oh, okay. So what you're seeing there is previously they were classified and identified all as music teachers. Now they're split out and identified by position grade. So we've, Ms. Turner's done that several times over to clarify her accounting book so she could identify position grade and salary lines. Ms. Turner, is that one of these cases here where you're, you're seeing district band teachers and music teachers separated out?
Yes, so 28 music teachers plus the three band teachers equals 31. Last year, they were combined with the music teacher.
Thank you, Ms. Turner.
Why don't we take a vote on page six first and then we're going to hit the page seven. So no change, Ms. Clark?
Yes.
All right, vote to accept. Motion to accept recommended, recommendation of superintendent approve the bottom line figure of $8,493,040 by Ms. Clark, seconded by Mr. Dakota. Roll call.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Darney?
Yes.
Mr. Howie?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
All right, page seven. Any questions? Sure, Ms. Darney?
On page seven, we have the content literacy position. Were there zero last year and now there's 14?
They were combined. They were combined with English teachers last year, and that's what I meant by the school site budget. We now list it all out and go school by school, so now there's a summary page that will show all of the different positions rather than combining content literacy into English.
Okay. I didn't have anything else.
Everybody good on page seven? If you need a couple minutes, just let me know, because... What's paging?
I'm glad you brought that up. The CBA negotiations is a placeholder, knowing that we are going to try to negotiate and see what we can, right? And then the other one, just to point out, is the adjustment of the school site budgets, that's where we put that placeholder. Again, we don't know what they would cut, so we couldn't go through and say minus one assistant principal, so we did the minus here as a placeholder.
All right, need a motion to accept the recommendation of superintendent approve the bottom line figure of 88,324,488. Motion by Ms. Darney, seconded by Mr. Dakota. Roll call.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Darney?
Yes.
Mr. Howie?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Page eight, medical therapeutic services. So on this page, Mr. Superintendent, obviously if something changes in the school year and we go back to a learning at home, we have money to play with in the long-term substitute account, which could be used for homebound instruction and things like that.
Ms. Turner?
We have $1 million in long-term sub, the long-term sub account. I do know that this year, if there was, if we had a long-term sub in a line, they still continued to get paid. So if, if...
Well, okay.
If we had a long-term, if we had a long-term sub at the beginning of the school year and we started remote learning, that teacher would do, as other teachers do, and provide the remote learning.
All right, then the day-to-day, we have the 1.2 million to play with.
Right. For whatever length of time that we, we were doing remote learning, yes.
That, that doesn't reflect a reduced amount though, right? I know that we had seen significant savings from short-term subs this year. We're not expecting that next year yet, are we?
No, but it, what I think the mayor means is that if we do remote learning in September and October, we would definitely...
Oh, yeah.
...think that there's a savings in this line, and that's why we do the projections and...
Right. I'm just looking at the 1.2 for last year and for this year, so the 1.2 is what we never came close to. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Darney?
Thank you. I just want to make sure we're not reducing the number of special education powers, right? It's just we're moving it into grant-funded positions, is that right?
We did, we did that, that's one thing, yes, we moved them over, but we also clarified, so with the total para positions, when we went and did the school site budget, we would identify whether a para was a special ed para or a regular ed para. So no, we're not reducing anything, they still have, we did put them on the grants, we put the majority of them on the grant because they're not MTRS staff, which would save us money. If you put MTRS staff on a grant, then you have to pay the 9% fee, so just by moving them around...
You saved 9%. So we're keeping all the same staffing of para, special ed and regular?
Not, we're not keeping everything. If the school elected to give up a para and, let's say if there was someone that was leaving a para position, the person might have left because it's a one-on-one position for a student that moved on, things like that. Or if they, if they chose to not fill a para position and add a teacher, they were allowed to do that. We let them have that flexibility, but...
Okay. So it might be a reduction in para's, but that would be the school-based decision?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Howie, do you have a question?
Yes, through you to the superintendent, do we, do we have school-based requirements to make sure we have certain classes at every school, like gym, art?
Yeah, PE is a, yeah, PE is a state law, but if you recall, we put forward guidance documents to all schools, so they had to build out their school-based plans that adhere to the district-wide guidance in order to build out their school-based budget. All of the allied arts, art, music, PE, that was all within the guidance documents, how they had to meet those expectations. We can resurface those guidance documents for the committee if you're interested.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on this page? Need a motion to accept the recommendation of superintendent approve the bottom line figure of $21,297,332 by Ms. Darney, seconded by Mr. Dillon?
If I could, it's not a recommendation, again, this is not best business practice for how you look at a budget. We don't, we can't look at any one-line item in isolation from the rest. This is built on a strategic plan that then builds a full budget to operationalize it. None of this would be my recommendation. I want to make sure I'm clear, I think it is my obligation to make those recommendations, and I do not recommend that we take these types of actions here, which appear to me to be arbitrary in some cases.
Okay. Motion, motion, motion to accept the bottom line of $21,297,332 by, sure. We already seconded first.
Yep.
Sure. Yeah, okay. Roll call.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Darney?
Yes.
Mr. Howie?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Page nine, coaching and curriculum support.
Page nine. Mayor, just go page eight?
Mr. Howie?
No, maybe I'm behind here. Did you say page nine?
Page nine, yeah.
Okay. Mayor, did we do page eight?
Yeah, we just did. That was just page eight, that we just voted on. Ms. Darney?
Yes, I just have a question. I noticed that we're eliminating some academic coaches. I wonder if you could kind of tell us what that role plays in...
Yeah, so we have seven schools currently identified for turnaround, our seven schools that have been chronically underperforming. We created our Renaissance Network, if you recall, at the beginning of this year, to provide some intensive support for those schools. These academic coaches were part of that Renaissance Network. Previously, we had recommended that to be reduced. Unfortunately, we had to make sure we also assumed another reduction here because the committee suggested it had a desire of the district support specialists to be increased. In order to increase one there, we had a reduction here as well as the bilingual liaisons. Again, that was an attempt to meet the feedback I was hearing from the committee. But again, I would say, I've got to go back through and fully analyze everything based on additional feedback now. So this, these positions were to support, train, and build our teachers within our Renaissance Network to improve outcomes for kids.
Question, Ms. Turner, the stipends for the teacher academy, mentor stipends, mentor stipends, little high school instructional stipends, and academy completion bonuses, could you just explain that to me?
I'll try. With the, with the teacher academy, I believe they have seasoned teachers mentor other teachers for three years, and as they complete the three-year mentor program, they end up getting a bonus that's with the completion bonuses. And the mentor stipends are for those teachers that are providing the mentorship.
So is it, we, there's like no numbers, so could be, how many people do you think might be involved in that?
I could get that information. You mean as far as how many teachers have provided the mentoring?
Out of the teacher academy instructor stipends, $60,000, that might get divided up to, what, $2,000 or $3,000 each, $5,000 each, $10,000 each?
Right, I believe it's $3,000 each.
About three, okay. All right. Any questions on this page? Need a motion to, sure, Ms. Martin?
Just a question on the tuition reimbursement. I know that that's one of our contractual obligations. Could you, so the, what are we looking at in terms of what we'll be spending on that this year?
The full 260.
The full 260? So I do think that that, I mean, that could be, could warrant a conversation as we get into these situations. Do we take a year hiatus? Do we recognize that that would save so many, you know, positions and that, something that collectively we could agree to consider?
Thank you. All right, so I need a motion to accept the bottom line of $2,201,395. Motion by Ms. Darney, seconded by Mr. Dillon. Roll call.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Darney?
Yes.
Mr. Howie?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Page 10, non-personal textbooks. Ms. Darney?
I just have a question. I know we were able to purchase a lot of textbooks in advance, I'm wondering, did we look into purchasing any online curriculum?
Ms. Desmond?
So at the time that we purchased the curriculum, that was before our closure, that's when we started pulling together the, the purchase orders, and it was to purchase the curriculum that we normally purchase every year, our Eureka Math curriculum, and our Fountas and Pennell and Lucy Cockens curriculum, they all have online components, they're all, you know, PDFs that can be gotten anywhere. As far as licensing for some of our online curriculum, that was part of the purchase, which we normally do, like Lexia and Reading A to Z and some other things. We didn't buy something new, with the exception of a science curriculum, because as you maybe know, our FOSS kits are experiential science kits, and so those are very hard to replicate at home. So we did have to make a purchase for an online science curriculum to be able to meet the standards, and we started using some of that material currently. You know, with the last couple of weeks of the packets that we've been using to help guide the curriculum online, we've been able to integrate some of those resources. So it isn't a full online curriculum, because we really don't know where we're going to be headed, but we, we did think through how to purchase some online curriculum that can support some of the things that we're not able to do with our current curriculum. that can support some of the things that we're not able to do with our current curriculum.
Thank you.
Mr. Dakota and then Mr. Howie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In view of the possibility of remote learning, I believe the district might end up having to pay the tab for internet access. So has that been addressed as to inherit another COVID-19 cost?
We're, we're assessing that now, no, but we have not had a chance to fully assess that as of yet. Again, our COVID expenses could be upwards of $7 million. That's the maximum number. We've only contemplated $600,000 here.
Yep. Thank you.
Mr. Howie?
Through you, Mayor, and the superintendent, do we have any, or do you, I know you have a lot on your plate, but any concerns about kids that are leaving for online charter schools, stuff like that?
Yeah, we have a, we expect a lot of movement of students among three different possibilities. We have some private schools that are closing that may be coming back to the district. We have some families that have been staying at home with their students, may not be returning them to a school environment at all, maybe increasing at-home learning. And part of that at-home learning, what I would expect would increase online charter enrollment. They all have online caps or enrollment caps to those online charters. So I don't yet know what the impact will be on the district, but I think we can make an educated guess to say there's going to be some apprehension and anxiety about the fall. And if families can stabilize their decisions, that being one of them, they may look to go in that direction more than they did in the past.
I just want to add to that a little bit because I think when social distancing, stuff like that, if we look into, there might be a lot of parents at home that don't mind having their kids online. But I know I don't like it whatsoever, especially for special ed kids. I don't think we're doing a great job. I know everybody's trying real hard. I think the failures are happening at home. That's where the problem is. When I heard Mr. Dillon say everybody's going crazy, I've seen it. And I'm watching the teachers that call and try to get my grandson involved, and it's almost impossible. I don't know how they're doing it. So I have a lot of concerns, and I imagine you're staying on top of that. So, thank you.
Any other questions on this page? Need a motion to accept page 10?
I'm sorry, just, I'd just like to know what the contracted service, the instructional contracted services are, computer?
Do you have that information, Ms. Turner, or do you need that from Ms. Desmond?
I, or I could summarize and say some contracted service, things like Wally Computer and things like that. But I wouldn't necessarily know exactly what they, what they do or provide, so.
It'd be a great answer to get. That's fine. I don't need it right now, but.
Okay. I need a motion by Mr. Dillon, seconded by Ms. Clark, to accept the bottom line of $22,8200. Roll call?
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Mr. Darney?
Yes.
Mr. Howie?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Page 11, guidance, yeah, guidance council. Sure, Ms. Martin?
I just, yeah, the sped social workers bed share that was something else last year?
Last year, it was combined with the social, it just said social workers last year. So in order for clarity, I mean, in order to have more clarity, I separated out sped social workers that are shared between schools and then building-based social workers where each school, most of the schools get one. So yeah, it was combined last year, but I just separated them out. So if you look at the previous columns, there were 42 sped, I mean, social workers, and now there are still 42, but they're just spread out. Yes. There were, prior to, last year, there were 10 on grants.
Right.
And now there are only two because here's the example of the paras. I moved the paras onto the grant, but I moved social workers and teachers off of the grant because of the MTRS. Social workers get MTRS, so that was in, we wanted to minimize which ones hit the grants.
Okay.
Okay. I need a motion to accept the bottom line of $7,992,830 by Mr. Dakota, seconded by Mr. Dillon. Roll call?
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Darney?
Yes.
Mr. Howie?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Page 12, attendance and parent liaison services. Sure, Mr. Howie?
Yeah, just, the only concern I have on that page is, is it true we lost a nurse? We went from seven down to six?
We would only go down if, if a child left. If a child left, they no longer needed the nursing services because the nurses are based on their IEPs. So the only way it would go down is if, we wouldn't cut it unless the student was no longer with us. So that was, that would be dictated by the special ed director.
Sure, Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I know we've had conversations about this, and I know that this represents a change on the part of the administration, and I appreciate moving in that direction. But I do think I would like to keep the, the three district support specialist positions in play at this point. I wouldn't want to cut one at this point. So if we could take that one position, move it into the suspense account, and I would actually say the same for the position of the bilingual family liaison. Let's, I'd like to make that decision when we have a better sense of what the district, of what our reality is.
Sure, Ms. Darney?
I agree with that, those motions, those movements.
Okay. Motion by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Darney.
Excuse?
Sure. I'm going to need the dollar amount in a minute. It's just the parentheses, Ms. Turner?
Yes. I'm adding them back, but I'm doing average salaries.
Okay.
And that I don't know there.
Oh, all right. Okay.
The new total would be $1,627,471. Okay, so $148,000.
What is it?
$148,000. But just as a, can I clarify, make sure that I clarify? So everything up until now, when we've cut something to put it into suspense, this is the opposite.
Right. Well, this is something that's being recommended as a cut, but I would like to keep it in suspense so that we can keep it in play until we make our final decisions.
So it has the opposite. I'm going to add it back, so to speak.
So you're adding it back into suspense, not onto this page?
Jacking up? Sure. Roll call?
Mr. Dillon?
What are we exactly voting on right now?
We're voting to take the two positions that are eliminated here, the district support specialist and the other district liaison, bilingual.
Parent liaison.
Sorry.
So we're not, sorry, sorry.
We're just voting to put them back in until we know what the numbers are. We're not going to make this cut at this time. We're, we're, keep, yeah.
Can I clarify, should I clarify though? Because we're not making any decisions right now, correct? We've not decided that these are the numbers at this point. We're really just going through and identifying where else we may see opportunity if needed.
Right, so.
Now, we're, it sounds like we're starting to make either additional decisions or.
Well, we're making a decision to keep this in suspense because we may not need to trim these out. So we're just keeping an option open.
So shouldn't, so should we be voting on just the two positions that we want to put into the suspense account and, and accept what is on here?
That would be, my understanding is we would take those two positions, put this into suspense, and then go on the same bottom line.
Right.
Correct, with no change on the bottom line of this.
Right. Yeah. Question, Mr. Dillon?
Yeah, I just, I don't understand if we're not prepared to make that decision, then why are we making any decisions tonight?
This is really kind of like a general discussion. So that's what we're talking about, just putting that over there.
I know, but moving money, moving money around doesn't make it sound, I don't know. I mean.
I think it's, if I could explain my motion, having made it, I've made the motion because I don't feel that this recommendation of eliminating these two positions is necessarily the direction I am personally going to be willing to vote to go. So I'm willing to entertain that perhaps as we get deeper in, we will have to make that cut. But at this point, I prefer to keep it in suspense so that we can bring back those positions into this line item should, you know, we have that opportunity.
We're just kind of holding it in advance, so.
Okay. Well, I just, you know, I don't.
Just let, let Mr. Dillon finish first?
Well, then what are we doing here? What are we, what are all the cuts that we just made, like, or that we have talked about? And we're moving money around, like, we've already, we've already had a lot of these conversations about this budget and a lot of similar line items.
Sure. This is the discussion as a body, as a whole. It's like a board meeting. We can't talk separately against, for the, for the rules. We can't speak individually. So this is a chance as a body to talk about any recommendations, any cuts, anything. I mean, you may want to add something, and we'll entertain that. So that's all we're doing. Right, but you may feel that some other position needs to be suspended and another position needs to come in. So that's what we're talking about. That's what, we have the luxury of doing on the school committee. So you have another question?
Yeah, I'm sorry, just, you know, well, then maybe we got to go back and vote on some prior things again. Because this just doesn't seem to me like we're going through and coming up with a, I don't know. The way that I look at it is, you know, yeah, we can start naming things off, but then come up with a list and then, you know, okay, most important, least, you know, well, right, I'm sorry? Well, I know, but you know what? It's not seeming that way to me. I don't know.
It's okay. Just, this is what we have for discussion. Mr. Dakota? So vote on the motion. We made a motion, vote on it.
So, okay, so.
Are we separating that though, as to the two items?
The first vote is just to put that, those two positions back in suspense.
Just vote for that.
$148,000 into suspense from this line item. So, Mr. Dillon?
Sure.
I'm sorry.
I just want to add some clarification from my perspective, how I'm looking at it. So we're trying to get to a number that would equal what we got last year, plus the $4 million from the feds, right? So we've made, the mayor made an additional suggestion on a cut that we put into the suspense account, and we subtracted that amount from this. Ms. Martin just made a motion to take these two positions and not subtract that, what is it, $148,000 from our bottom line number, put those positions in suspense. So it's all still not being decided on. But one, one item, the, the cuts that are in suspense are impacting the bottom line that we're trying to get to if we only get the same money we got last year, which I'm holding that it won't be worse than that. I don't know if that makes it clear.
It doesn't quite work that way, the math. I'm just trying to make sure that the math works. We can't cut our CFO. That's the only way for me to get to that number by one employee. I can't force people into contract negotiations to reduce their salaries by 20% to get to this number. So the balancing, I'm appreciating the exercise, but let's also understand there's some kind of exercise here that can't really be operationalized. So maybe the goal is to balance these things out, but that doesn't necessarily mean that that's what you're going to have at the end of the day. There's a, so I'm, again, I'm appreciating the exercise. This may be commonplace here to go through this process. This is a highly unusual budget adoption process from my 20 years of experience in education. So I just, I will be glad to bring a recommendation back again. I'll be glad to go back through the strategic planning process. But every one decision has an impact on another. We can't just go through guessworking what the math is ultimately going to be. But again, I appreciate the exercise and the feedback, committee.
Thank you. Roll call? Sure, Ms. Turner?
Just to clarify, I just want to emphasize this. Up until now, we've, when we would make a suggested cut, it was like putting the money into a pool, what you're calling the suspense account. But in this case, it's a, I'm clarifying being that Ms. Sheehan said something, it almost seemed opposite of what I thought. So if we've been putting money into the pool, when we just added back these positions, we took away from the pool, correct? Okay.
Thank you. Roll call?
Mr. Dillon?
Can we refresh on the motion on the table?
It's to move $184,800, which is the two student support specialists in the liaison position, into the suspense account. Those positions to hold them, like the mayor said.
Mm-hmm. You know, I mean, relative to other decisions that we've made tonight, I don't know how to vote. We're not looking at it in a, a manner that, you know, I don't know.
All right. So we have to take the roll call. Roll call, please?
No.
Ms. Darney?
Yes.
Mr. Howie?
No.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Ms. Clark?
No.
Mr. Dakota?
No.
Four yeas, three yeas, I'm sorry, four, three yeas, four yeas, motion fails.
So what's the bottom line on this page then, Ms. Turner? Doesn't change? Okay, so a motion to accept bottom line figure of $1,479,471 by Mr. Howie, seconded by Ms. Darney.
Mr. Dillon?
We're accepting no changes, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Darney?
No.
Mr. Howie?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Six yeas, one day approved.
Transportation, page 13. Any questions?
Mr. Mayor, so the increase in this is, is the already established contractual increase, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Darney?
What's the decrease from?
As you know, this year, we've seen a surplus, and the surplus was because the actuals in the special ed transportation were much lower than what we thought it would be. So that we're basing it on what the actuals were for this year. So it decreased due to just, yeah, because I think they're being most, I think they're taking it into consideration more before adding special ed transportation for every student. for every student, you know, so I think they're just analyzing each child and.
All right, seeing no questions, a motion to accept the bottom line figure of eleven million, seven, nine, four, two, five, six by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Mr. Dillon. Roll call.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Howie?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Seven ayes approved.
Page 14, athletics and student activities. Sure, Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. Are we thinking that we're going to be able to have fall athletics?
It's one of these cases where we simply don't know. We simply don't know. I will tell you, um, among the many things that have been extremely difficult for me to be able to just come to terms with throughout disclosure, if I was, if my senior year of athletics was taken away from me due to a pandemic, you probably wouldn't see me here today. For many of our students, that's the case. I told you, I told many of you, you know, how meaningful my coach was to me. I didn't even find a little level of real competitiveness wrestling on the mat until my senior year. That year, that one year alone, uh, had some life-changing moments for me. So I would hesitate until we know, and yeah, I, I simply don't know. I can't commit to you that we can, we don't know what the case is going to be, um, but I will tell you, that was one of the hardest things, I think, to come to terms with. I've talked to many people within the community, some of you probably have those personal experiences. You grow so much through, and it's not even just athletics, any number of other opportunities that our kids have that are just unique one year, that could propel them to college, could propel them to any other number of life opportunities, and so, I don't know, Committee Member Doherty, but I would urge caution here, we don't know, um, and we certainly, with all of these things, we want our kids to continue to prepare, our coaches to continue to prepare, because those opportunities will be either afforded to our kids or not based on the shape of the health condition within the community.
Sure, Ms. Doherty?
I understand that, I get it. I played sports myself in school, my kids were involved in a lot of different activities. However, I was not in favor of paying for the after-school sports for the spring, right? And it, I forget what it was, a hundred and forty thousand dollars, whatever, um, because those were stipends that I, I didn't really think we were going to get what we needed and that we were going to have shortfalls in other essential areas. So at this point, I think it is early and, and to say, you know, we're not going to fund coaches for the fall, if there is a possibility that we can have sports, I want to be able to support that, but I just want to be, have it be known that if we get information that we are not going to be having sports in the fall, I, I do not think that it would be prudent for us to be paying stipends for sports that are not going to happen, when on the other hand, we're going to be laying off people, um, people that are, that we really need helping our kids. And I, and that's not to say that sports aren't important or that extracurricular activities aren't important for some kids, I agree, it's a make or break, it keeps them going to school. But I think that in these times, if we're not playing sports, I would not support putting that money out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martin.
Thank you very much. You know, I certainly agree with, with Ms. Doherty on all points, that, you know, I don't want us to make a decision on this at this point. I do see the importance of sports to the superintendent's points, I, point, I had similar experiences in high school and it changed me and it was great. I think to Ms. Doherty's point, if we find out we're not going to have the ability to compete and have these sports, yes, that puts it back on the table, that perhaps this isn't money that we can afford to spend. I will also say, to be true to my word, I had said when we first had this conversation about spring coaches, I was, it was a leap of faith and that we would, I thought we should pay them because it, you know, certainly wasn't their fault that they weren't able to do this, we had made that commitment, but that come the end, we would need tangible, concrete proof of what they had done. I was told that that would not be a problem, we'd be getting, we'd be getting metrics, you know, we'd be getting information about how coaching sessions were conducted, how many kids were engaged with, all that kind of information. I think if we can get that information, then you have an argument to make for moving forward in the fall. I haven't seen that information, I, I'm not as involved as some others, so they may have it and I don't, but I mean, it was, I put it out there, I think, very clearly as an opportunity, so I think if we can get that information, if that has indeed happened, I mean, and obviously, you know, that's going to be the key, um, that would be the place to make an argument, to maintain these funds, should we not be able to, to compete in the fall. If that work has been done, I think we'd all be the better off for it, so, thank you.
Thank you. One question, Ms. Turner, the stipends for the IDEA Camp, so it looks like last year there weren't any and this year there's forty thousand, or was it in a grant last year? Sure, Ms. Whoever.
So IDEA Camp is, it was not funded in our general budget last year, so through outside providers, we were able to raise enough money to hold IDEA Camp last year. This year, we didn't have those same funding sources, so it was built into the budget to supplement, that, that doesn't cover the entire program, it just supplements it.
Okay, all right, thank you. Mr. Howie and then Mr. Dillon?
Yeah, through you to the, to the superintendent, um, on this page 14, there's a few, few things I'd like to see you maybe look into if you ever get caught up with yourself. One is the high school quiz show on Channel Two, has anybody ever watched it? You have like Boston Latin and Lexington and all those spots. I think with, uh, your connections to Boston, you might be able to get a little, a team on that, uh, number one. And, and number two, I, I'm pretty sure that we've cut about fifty thousand dollars in the past few years out of the athletic budget, and, um, if you don't mind, through the mayor, uh, to the superintendent again, can you find out a number for how many children we have in Lowell High School, obviously, we got close to somewhere near three thousand, I would guess, to thirty-one hundred? And find out if there's a number that we should be spending on sports? I don't know if that's possible.
We can do some analysis there, for sure.
Yeah, just to see, uh, on a school that big, how much we're spending. I got a good feeling we're underspending on, on, uh, sports, believe it or not, I believe that.
Thank you, Mr. Dillon?
Yeah, Dr. Boyd, I actually, the High School Coaches Association has numbers on that type of budgetary stuff, um, but I'd just also like to bring up that, uh, you know, mental health is a huge thing that we're talking about right now, and every avenue of physical activity that we can offer is going to be very important, getting back into the swing of school and giving kids, you know, a, a connection and like, uh, Ms. Doherty said, uh, it keeps kids, you know, more opportunities keep kids in school, kids in school, so if, if dropout rates are something that, you know, we're going to continue to talk about as well, um, the more opportunities, the better. You know, after school and outside of the regular learning day, uh, they're going to be very important. We also had two hundred thousand dollars that was in previous, um, versions of the budget that has now been taken out, um, of funding for athletics, um, so we need to keep that in mind when we're talking about these numbers. Thank you.
Thank you. Quickly, Mr. Alex.
Yeah, I'll be. You know, when we pay those spring coaches, I believe it was between a hundred and fifty and a hundred and sixty thousand, but we also get thirty-five sports, seventy-two teams on a hundred and forty different people, helping our children and mold. And if you look at it, they have a basketball team that lost one game, pretty sure it's twenty-two and one, I have all their records. They have a hockey team that, well, it's probably, probably down to Boston, as I like to call it, and, um, a track, cross-acting track, I think we're one of the best in New England. Yeah, I have OTC, I think that's something else, when I see kids paid for money, sit in front of the auditorium as the golden locks go on, and we kick it up there, the kids are told, kind of collect a few bucks as a form of trip. And we have some teams, some of the best in the area right now, it's the first time I've seen them in a long time, I hope we can bring back wrestling. I know, I have my speaker on here. I'm really upset about baseball not playing this spring. Now, there's a sport that you can play and you can be safe at it. Yeah, they're going to touch the ball, uh, we all told, don't put your hands near your face and wash your hands. These kids got ripped off real bad and these coaches in the city of Lowell right now, I thought this was the best thing I ever seen a school committee do, pay, pay coaches that didn't do their job. I think we should all hold our heads up high for spending that money, and now we have to look at football, we have to look at wrestling, sports that have fallen down a little bit. This AD's actually fired, I believe, replaced one of his coaches, I won't pick on the sport that he did it, but, uh, I'm seeing a lot of production out of this AD. I know when you look at his, when we look at the budget, his pay is split, some people have been calling me on it, sixty-something thousand on one budget and a little bit on the other, and you know it was one of my biggest issues, Mr. Superintendent, that, and you put Ms. Desmond in charge of it, and I'm looking forward to what's going to come out of this at the end. I think nothing but good things are going to come for Lowell High School, and thank you for the time, Mayor. Thank you.
So, only a recommendation for this page from myself, uh, make a motion that, um, superintendent, look into, uh, some changes in the AD position, because I feel that that's a position that, uh, it just, we're not serving the children well. That position years ago was split with the phys ed, um, position, the, uh, so I think we should take a look at that to, and you'll probably second that, Mr. Dillon, um, if we can, if it's possible, I think that should be a full-time position, we should do, uh, the phys ed, uh, not the phys ed, the, uh. Yeah, yeah, that should be either divided up by somebody at the high school or a new position, so I would make a motion and seconded by Mr. Dillon.
Yeah, can I just speak, Mr. Mayor, um, there's, you know, those plans are in place, we have talked about, uh, doing that, but in light of the situation that we're in, we decided that, um, you know, more important than making a move like that was saving in other areas. So we're, we're, we're on that.
All right.
I mean, are you looking to?
I'll just put the, put it in officially tonight and we'll.
Okay.
Quick vote, and if that's fine. So, Mr. Dakota?
This is a very sensitive subject and I, I bring it up not lightly certainly, um, but I can recall several years ago, and I believe you were probably on the school committee at the time, Mayor, Mr. Mayor, of, uh, that there was a cut of, I think it was a third on the stipends at the high school.
Yep.
That particular, you remember that year? I'm not proposing that at all, I, I'm just thinking maybe if we, as a thought going forward, it's not going, I don't want to put it in, into anything, uh, but maybe a 10% cut, that would save like about fourteen thousand, almost, about, yeah, about fourteen, maybe fifteen thousand, just that right there, uh, and, and perhaps a 10% on all the coaches. I mean, if, if we're going to try to go get that, I mean, so there, uh, with the coaches taking a 10% cut, and I'm not proposing that certainly, uh, that would be over like almost six, what, fifty-three, fifty-three thousand?
All right. So we can just take a look at that, yeah.
You know, just some food for thought.
Sure, okay. Can I get a vote on my motion? Roll call.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
No.
Mr. Howie?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Six sheays, one nay, passes.
All right, sure, Ms. Turner?
To clarify, this motion is to investigate or research, right, but not to add back into the.
Right, just to look at right now and if there's a possibility in the end to, because I just feel that that's a position that is, is, uh, we're just doing a disservice to the, to the kids. There's no way an AD in Lowell can do both positions and, and fully serve that position, and it just needs to be rectified if it can be.
So to kind of make sure I have clarity here, is the thirteen million dollars that we already cut out of this budget essentially in suspense? I mean, I don't, I don't know that, I mean, we already removed thirteen million dollars that included the arts, included athletics, included expanded, expanded early learning, included, uh, some significant support around culturally, linguistically sustaining practices, included redesign at our high school level, included, uh, additional climate support. Am I to assume, based on this conversation, that that too is in suspense, or are we saying that that's a different conversation? Help me, help me understand because.
My motion?
No, not, no, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm trying to understand the entirety of the conversation. Some things are added in suspense, some things are taken away in suspense. Where are those thirteen million dollars that are investing in our strategic plan? Is that to be considered in suspense, or is that just evaporated? What is the, I'm, I'm trying to make sense of this conversation I'm a part of here tonight, and I got to tell you, I'm, I'm struggling, uh, and I've got to operationalize this, so I'm trying to understand, what does suspense mean in the eyes of the committee, I guess?
We're just moving, um, money to the side for discussion, for, uh, if money comes in, money goes out, we're going to decide on what the budget should be. So that money is moved to a suspense account and, uh, it's in the waiting for decisions.
All right, so how does this relate to the strategic plan that we adopted, that we had been working on for a full year?
Well, with the pandemic, I think it's blown up, to be quite frank, so right now, you know, you came in, you had a strategic plan, from what I learned from being here from January on, uh, it seemed like a great course. Pandemic hit, the whole country is underwater by trillions of dollars, so we may not be able to do what we wanted to do. We, the bottom line is, we got to educate the kids and if your plan works with this, with the cuts and the money we have in the end, then all the better. I mean, that's kind of the way I'm looking at it, so.
Can I, can I ask a follow-on?
Sure.
Because we did adjust the strategic plan just a couple of weeks ago, based on the pandemic, we actually went to a one-plus-four strategic plan, there was a one-year strategic plan, so there was no plan adopted prior to this current makeup of the committee, we actually adopted a modified strategic plan based on full community input, full community vetting, and a through-line for a logical budget is you start with the plan, then you fund the plan. I think that's the struggle I'm having here, we, we can't start with funding and then address the plan, you start with one, so I, I actually need to go back and revise the plan each time we have one of these scenarios. So the idea here and what I recommended before is, we'll go back and modify the plan based on an assumption of 5% reduction, based on 10% reduction, so we can have a full conversation, starting with the plan, what you're accomplishing and how you're funding that. Doing each line item is, um, and I, the best analogy I can come up with is, this feels like we're almost going to the grocery store here and shopping from the shelves, that's not how this process typically works, uh, for a strategic planning process that leads to a strategic funding process. So I, I just, I'm trying to understand all of that, but I appreciate it, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
All right, and I just think that, um, this gives every committee member a chance as a body to express their feelings, so, Ms. Martin, did you have something? Were you all set? Okay.
Can I ask a, a clarifying?
Sure, Ms. Clark?
Maybe to clarify my vote on the last motion, I think it is important that, I think we received some material already about athletics and if it is identified as something, a position that would make sense, I agree with Mr., what Mr. Dillon said, at some point in the future, if it aligns with our plan, that we would perhaps look at that as a, as something for a future year. I would not consider that as something we put into a recommendation for next year as a, an additional salary or something, an additional position, so.
And that's fine, the way I look at it is, we're driving around with a flat tire, so if we want to drive around with a flat tire for years, that's fine, we can still go forward, but we got a flat tire.
Right.
I mean, that's the simplest way I can put it. It's a big disservice to the kids, this, uh, position involves, uh, sixteen hours a day plus weekends. It's just, and it's nothing personal, it's just something that I saw that didn't get corrected years ago when I was on the committee, and it hasn't gotten corrected ever since, and I just think that, uh, you know, if we had a math teacher who was teaching sixty kids, I'd be saying the same thing, it just doesn't work. So that's all I'm saying with this.
Yeah.
It's just a position I feel needs to be corrected, so.
But I do think, I think it is important that we, you know, we continue, and it sounds like we've made a lot of decisions based on the strategic plan. like we've made a lot of decisions based on the strategic plan. We continue with bare-bones decisions, you know, that really still continue to move us in the direction we've all determined and our community has determined is important and critical. I mean, even the note here that the K-38 Athletics and Arts investment is paused completely, I think that means we're not doing anything with that level. Is that, is that true?
Nothing additional, and I think you're bringing up a good, a good point. Yes, if you recall, we had a, we went forward with first, the scenario you received as a committee was based on a governor's proposal of an additional thirteen-point-two million dollars. That you had one plan, it was put together. I believe that was a motion from Committee Member Doherty that said, let's do that planning earlier. So, you actually had that presentation that came. Each subsequent scenario went forward with a new plan. Some of those plans, and I want to recognize, Mr. Dakota and Mr. Dillon, actually provided input as we started to move through a plan that didn't allow us to acknowledge the needed investments in K-8 Athletics and Arts. So, we went, put together a plan, then we came back with another investment. That happened with the level services scenario. Now, I'm coming with a level funded scenario, which again, requires a modified plan. That modified plan, we put forward with the one-plus-four strategic planning process because there is an obligation for us to make sure that we're engaging community feedback. That community feedback, from my standpoint, my perspective, occurs through the planning process, then we're funding that plan. That's how the, so, you're hearing it correctly. It's just unfortunately, that through-line is not as, it wasn't as clear to me, and I imagine it might not have been as clear to you. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for allowing me the privilege of that moment.
All right. So, we have a motion to accept the recommended bottom line of one million five hundred thirty-one nine seventy-two for athletics. Motion by Mr. Dillon, seconded by Mr. Hoey. Roll call.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Mr. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoey?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Page fifteen, Custodial Security Services. Questions on this?
I know that the, the six hundred thousand is only a placeholder that could go up goodness knows dramatically. As you were looking at that number, did you take into consideration any of the increased, you know, sanitation costs? And is that included in that line or would it be included, should we include it here?
This is the, the total variable six hundred thousand would be all-inclusive of just the best estimate at the time you released.
I'm sorry. At the time that we released this packet, now my best guess would be actually far higher. And yes, some of those things need to be placed in there. They were included within the cost estimate here. Some other things we didn't assume that now we're learning, we're gonna, I had not assumed gowns and face shields and that kind of stuff that now we're gonna have to do. That's why you end up in this range of six hundred thousand, I think a woeful underestimate, unless something's gonna come forward in terms of support. It's feeling like seven million's far more realistic, but that feels like that also might be a Chicken Little, Sky Is Falling-type estimate that somebody else put forward. So, I don't wanna put that out there. We'll continue to analyze and assess as information comes forward.
Thank you.
Any questions on this page? Sure, Mr. Hoey?
I know when you look at your school resource officers, I've had a problem with this for years. We're down to five now, Mayor. The city has five, that's what they're planning on doing. If we open up our schools, you have five SRO officers to cover twenty-eight schools. Not too long ago, you had nine. We're forgetting, because of the virus, we're forgetting all the real tragic school shootings we had in the past twenty years, over a hundred and forty school shootings, and we're falling down on protecting our schools. It's just something the city council has to look at because that's in their court. If we open up our schools, and I hope we do, we shouldn't have five resource officers watching twenty-eight schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on this page? I'd like to make a motion that we consider cutting fifty thousand dollars out of man-out overtime, put it in suspense account. Need a second? Mr. Dakota?
I.
I just feel like, you know, this is something that we can't afford. There's, there's money for overtime, somebody's out, just do the best you can. I don't know why. It's in the contract to pay people extra money to do a little extra when their partner is out for the day, so. Mr. Hoey?
What, yes, thank you, Mayor. It wasn't too long ago that we had a hundred and one custodians and we're down to ninety-four.
Yep.
And for the twenty-eight schools, I know, I, I do a lot of searching through the schools when it comes to maintenance, and Mr. Underwood said he's scrapped for help right now. So, I'm not sure if we cut those.
No, it's just overtime.
Does that mean man-out sick time? If they're out, is that the overtime?
This is, if I'm, if I work with you in a building and I'm out, you get, you get extra pay for that day to, to go into my section, do a little more work. That's what it's for. I think, hey, we'll just do the best we can.
Yeah, and I.
Get a stipend because I'm out sick. Just do what you can and that fifty thousand could go back into the budget.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I could, Dr. Hall, is there a contractual requirement to this, this dollar amount? Where does the dollar amount come from?
[inaudible].
Okay. All right. So, that, that mayor may not be a dollar amount. We can operationalize, Mr. Mayor, depending on the.
So, it's all or nothing?
I'm not sure.
All right. Well, I make a recommendation that we look at this then and bring it up next time.
Yeah, what you have, Mr. Mayor, in some of our contracts is a provision, if X number of people are out, then this kicks into play, this other provision of the contract, so. But yeah, thank you. I'd like the opportunity to analyze it.
All right. So, if there's no other, can we just move on on this one?
I just, I have one more thing, Mayor. Sorry, but.
We're almost done and we can get out.
No, I, I hear you, but these facility area managers, we had two, and now we're down to one. I have an issue with that too because I, I know the one that just left. He left for a job that roughly making about ninety-five thousand. I think it's in Chemseit. But I think it's a good cut to go to that one person, but we might have to look at later on to make sure he gets a small, a small amount if he's holding up two jobs because he really is. And that's the way I feel. Those people like Mr. Underwood, I mean, I don't wanna name a lot more of your staff, but I think they're going above and beyond really hard, and we're understaffed and we gotta be careful.
Oh, yeah, we.
If we open up.
All right. Thank you.
All right.
Motion to accept the bottom line of five million nine six oh two seven zero. Roll call? Huh? Oh, motion by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Ms. Martin.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Mr. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoey?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Page sixteen, Employee Benefits and Retirements. Any questions? The motion to accept the bottom line of seven oh two oh seven five by, sure, Ms. Turner?
There's actually two sections on that page. It's the bottom line for help is nineteen million one oh six. It's up above. It's the first, it's the first section.
All right. So, we add them both in, you're saying?
Yeah, like, we're gonna treat it as two separate pages. When I redo the budget, I'm going to list these on two separate pages.
So, what's the?
Right here.
Right. So, what's the bottom line?
No, you can do them separately because they're two separate account numbers.
Oh, all right. I see what you're saying. Okay. All right. So, you want one total or you want both?
No, I would do them separate where they're two separate account numbers.
All right. Okay. So, need a motion to accept the bottom line nineteen million one oh six eight eight six by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Dakota. Roll call?
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Mr. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoey?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
All right. So, rental, rental of buildings, no questions on that?
Now, employee benefits. We didn't do that.
Yep. That was the employee benefits, the nineteen.
No, there's two of them. There's, oh, I'm sorry, rental of buildings. Okay.
Yep. So, now I need a motion to rec, uh, accept the bottom line of seven oh two.
Excuse me, Mayor.
Seven five. Mr. Hoey?
Yeah, rental of buildings, is, is there a figure on how much we brought in this year?
No, but it was substantially decreased due to the closure.
Okay. Yep. Yep. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Motion to accept by Mr. Dillon, seconded by Ms. Clark. Roll call?
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Mr. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoey?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
All right. Page seventeen, Capital Outlay. Need a motion to accept the final bottom line of two-two-five thousand by Ms. Doherty. Sure, Mr. Dillon? Did you have a question or you seconded? Okay. By Ms. Doherty, seconded by Mr. Dillon. Roll call?
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Mr. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoey?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Page eighteen, Outer District Budget. Sure, Ms. Turner?
I just wanted to point out and emphasize on this page that this is where we said this was a high-risk idea, but we just wanted to make sure you're aware of it. It was six-point-three million in the general fund and four-point-one in the circuit breaker offset. We put five-point-one in the circuit breaker offset in order to balance the budget. So, that, if we did get additional funding, this would be one of our top priorities to reverse.
On that, on that note, because as I'm learning about this process, it sounds like what the committee would benefit from is going back to all of those things that we had discussed about investing in and go to some type, share with you what those priorities are based on what the risks are and what the implications are. I just want, I wanna make sure that the many conversations I've had with others that we've been able to incorporate here, that I'm not losing that guidance through votes on suspense because I did receive guidance on arts, on athletics, on data infrastructure, early learning, and so on. So, is, I'm assuming here, based on this conversation, that the expectation is a prioritized list depending on how funds come back in addition to the scenario-based planning for cuts. Am I understanding correctly? Okay. All right. There's a.
Okay. Any questions on page eighteen? Motion to accept the bottom line of five million three hundred thousand by Ms. Clark, seconded by Mr. Dakota. Roll call?
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Mr. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoey?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Now, we need a motion. We need to move the bottom line within suspense account. We need to vote on that.
All right. So, Ms. Turner, do we have a bottom line for the suspense account tonight?
Two hundred and eighty-four thousand.
Just, you need to speak louder into the mic, I don't know.
Two hundred and eighty-four thousand.
Now, what is, what is the benefit of that? Help me to understand the value.
All right. Let me just do the roll call, please.
I need it first and a second.
Yep. Motion by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Doherty. Roll call?
Mr. Dillon?
I'm sorry, what is this vote on?
It's the bottom line on the suspense account, two hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars.
The money that's in the suspense account.
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoey?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Now, we're, we're.
Now, you need to now just take a motion to accept the, the bottom line figure as is right now.
Well, it's all the same because we just.
That's right. So, you need a motion to just accept that at one eighty-three or whatever that is, whatever the bottom, bottom line.
Two eighty-four or the fourteen million. It's all the same, fourteen million.
This number here, John. One eighty-three, that's the bottom line.
All right. All right. So, I need a motion to accept and approve the Lowell Public Schools FY twenty-one final bottom line figure at one hundred eighty-three five six seven four eight zero. Motion by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Doherty. Roll call?
How can we approve that? We don't know. Is there really a number? Can't we just accept this as a, as a potential at this point?
It's what we voted on tonight.
I would, I would suggest and recommend that you accept it as a report of progress. I concur. There's no, that's what was my question before, Mr. Mayor. I'm just struggling with what the value is of the suspense account versus the adoption. We're gonna be in the millions of dollars conversation here. That's where we're gonna be. I, I've gotta go back five percent. We're talking about five percent. I appreciate the guidance on 283,000, but I'm struggling here to see the value on further action. I would leave that, though, to the, to the committee for guidance.
Sure, Ms. Martin?
I think it's perfectly appropriate that we take a vote of this as a report of progress, as this was meant to be a communication venue so that we could, in fact, have these conversations and that the superintendent could glean from that at least some ideas about where we want to see, what we want to see protected and what we can see as areas that we may want to cut. I understand that this has been a, a new process for you that you've never seen before. I think it's unfortunate that with three members of your staff having been through this multiple times, they weren't able to prepare you better for what this would be. So I'm, I'm sorry that that didn't work out better. But I do think that there is some information for you to take from this process that may help you moving forward. And when we are back in this room talking about laying off hundreds and hundreds of teachers, I think that this small bit of work was at least a beginning. So I, I would make a motion to accept it as a report of progress, and then we can move forward with future budget hearings as information becomes available. Thank you.
Motion by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Dougherty. Roll call?
Mr. Dillon?
We're just accepting and move the money to the suspense account.
No, this is just to accept it as a report of progress.
And a part of progress.
Should I comment?
Sure.
I don't, you know, I don't care how it's been done in the past. This is not a good way to look at and start chopping up these numbers. And any of my questions tonight are not because I don't understand the budget. I have actually a very good understanding of the budget, and I've brought up my concerns all along the way in this budget process. So, you know, I, I don't know what, we're clearly not on the same page. I don't even know what happened tonight. I have to go back and look at my votes early in the thing, because I'm probably gonna end up changing them, because this whole night was stupid and confusing. We got nothing done, and if this is the way that we've done it in the past, it's, I put a motion in right now to change that, because this is absolutely ridiculous. I got nothing out of tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Hoey.
Yeah, I just want to say, basically, I'm sorry to the superintendent that I'm not sharp enough to control a meeting, because I feel the meeting was controlled by three of my colleagues. Well, two of them and yourself, Mayor. I think this superintendent's already been disrespected. We told him to change our city, make changes, and he tried to do that, and we fell apart. I feel like a failure tonight for you, Mr. Superintendent, but keep the faith. Still early. Some dough might come in at the end of the month to help you out. I think your staff did the best job I've ever seen in my career, and other people don't feel that way. Sorry you had it end like this, but that's how I feel.
All right. Thank you. Roll call?
Mr. Dillon?
What are we on now?
Just accepting as a report of progress.
Yes.
Mr. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoey?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Need a motion adjourned, but sure, Ms. Dougherty?
I'm sorry, I just had two quick questions related to the information movement overnight. It's not gonna change the bottom line or anything. I was wondering, we had a speaker from the clerical staff asking, why couldn't we hold those positions and just put zero funding on the budget? Is there a reason that we can't do that? Because we have done that in the past. Remember, we were eliminating two clerical, was it two?
Yeah, I believe, um, the questions come back, so I think they came with that request based on a question they asked me before, could we put a dollar there? My answer to them, you can't put a dollar there, because we can't have a number that reflects less than minimum wage nor something that's less than contract. So I think now the question was about zero. I actually don't see any downside to that. You're seeing that within this spreadsheet right now. I can bring back to you if there is a concern.
I think we've done it in the past, that's why I didn't know why it would be a problem.
I believe we've seen other things in there.
But I'm open to it, Ms. Turner.
Challenge with accounting for that, just a zero to line out?
Well, I just think it would be misleading if you put, if, if we have 27 positions and then we just add it 20, and make it 29, then our, I don't know, that's just not really...
So I know you've been trying to do a lot of work to clean up the way we listed things, you know, identify if it's a special ed nurse or a special ed parent. So if this causes confusion, fine. I just wanted to ask, because I know we've done it before. My other question, and I didn't talk about it when we were on the page for the Coordinator Research Testing and Assessment, but I know Dr. Boyd and I have talked about this position. So this was the position, this person has retired. This was the position that provided all our data reports to DESI that analyzed the information we had about our, that we got in our student management system, which is, we've been calling X2, it's Aspen 2 as well. I would just ask for, if you could provide us with a report about how we are going to move forward with all that information that DESI requires, with being able to analyze if we have a, we want to know what's happening with our dropout rates and what percentage of groups of kids. You know, who is gonna do that work if we're not replacing the coordinator for research and testing? Who from that department is gonna have the responsibility? Because my understanding is we've hired two new people in that department, data, IT, whatever it's called, they are not familiar with X2. And there may be other student management systems out there, but we are not a district that's going to invest in that right now. So I would just like to get some assurances that we'll be able to get the data we need, because I know that part of what Mr. Schlickman did, not only providing the school committee with data, let's say around our MCAS scores, but each school would get information, each teacher would get information about how their students did. That is critical in terms of our ability to continue to make progress in education and looking at where are the weak links in our classrooms and in our curriculum, wherever it's coming from. Without that data, we're not gonna be able to do it. So I would like some reassurance about how we're gonna move forward without filling that position. I know it's, we have put it in the suspense account for tonight. And after that, I would just make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. Hoey.
Yeah, Mr. Schlickman retired. They just want a seat in the on, in the committee. But when it did work for us, he was put in a closet because he didn't get along with our administration before he got here. So, you know, I hope whoever you do hire to replace that person, we use him the right way to collect data and convey it to our staff. But he was abused, not used. He was stuffed up in a closet on the second floor, so just take that into consideration.
But the position...
I'm almost done. Mr. Dillon, the real problem is here, and some of these things were done because people take care of their friends. That's what this is all about tonight. That's my opinion. Thank you very much. I'm ready to adjourn.
Sure, Mr. Dillon?
Motion to adjourn.
Yep. Seconded by Ms. Dougherty. Thank you.